But one of the reasons that it works is because it builds community. Is it because it tells our young people that we care about you? That you are our future and that we're going to invest in our future.
And the future for these kids couldn't look brighter. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The Summer Night Lights program runs from July to September. And it's not just kids who are graduating from school this summer. Anna Marcos reports on the latest graduates from the city's Gang Intervention Academy and their commitment to help the city wage its war on gangs and violence.
The paparazzi are out in full force and these are the stars. The 23 grads of the fifth graduating class of the Gang Intervention Academy, a project by city leaders and community members to help promote peace and end violence on L.A. city streets.
We're building an army, folks. Just know, there's an army for peace that we're building. And you are the vanguard of it.
It's extremely important. It's important to this city. It's important to our children. It's important to the youth of this, of this great community.
Many Gang Intervention Academy members are former gang members themselves. Taman Peters was never in a gang, but he grew up in violent streets. He says he's become a gang intervention worker for the sake of his children.
I'm planning on taking it and taking it straight to the community, straight to the streets. It'd make a positive change to promote peace. No violence, man.
The graduates run through a rigorous 140-hour course for 14 weeks to become certified as gang intervention workers.
Mediation and conflict resolution, ceasefires and understandings. Hospital intervention, legal liability, and law enforcement dynamics are just a few of the topics that are covered in great depth over that 140-hour period.
The course is tough. Out of 500 students in the last two years, only about 100 have graduated.
This Intervention Academy, the only one of its kind, has actually reduced violence. We're doing something that is unique, one of a kind, in the United States. I mean, we could keep on sending people into prison. At what cost to America?
City leaders feel their method of gang intervention could soon change the landscape of how we fight crime and gangs, both here and across the country. And these 23 graduates make the latest batch of soldiers heading to the front lines. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And other cities around the country are looking to L.A. to copy this blueprint for gang intervention. With the Fourth of July holiday upon us, police and fire officials have announced a crackdown on illegal fireworks. As Anita Bennett reports, violators face jail time and steep fines.
Three, two, one.
It's a familiar sound every Fourth of July, and it's a sound the L.A. Fire Department warns could signal trouble.
Fireworks are responsible for causing unnecessary fire loss to structures and vehicles throughout Los Angeles every year.
They also send people across the city to emergency rooms every year.
You take off a hand, or lose fingers, or lose an eye. Certainly, we see all that.
That's why city and county leaders teamed up to remind residents to play it safe at public fireworks displays instead of using them at home.
Even those little sparklers can get as hot as 1,200 degrees.
Officials say sparklers and firecrackers pose a particular threat, especially during the summer fire season.
A lot of people play with fireworks and shoot off fireworks in the fire hazard areas, in the hillsides, and those kinds of places. That's a prescription for disaster, literally and figuratively.
All fireworks are illegal in L.A. County, so is firing a gun in the air to celebrate.
If you do either of those two things, you place yourself at significant risk. Risk of harm, risk to the rest of the community, and risk of spending a holiday in jail.
And officials say if you're caught using fireworks, you don't just face spending time in jail, you could be hit with a $1,000 fine. In Allegiant Park, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
Officials say half of the people who suffer fireworks-related injuries are children under the age of 15. The city cleans up parts of Skid Row deemed a public health hazard, remembering a man whose death helped spark the Asian-American civil rights movement. And an avid cyclist is killed in a hidden run. Your help is needed. These stories and more in City Beat.
L.A. Public Works crews began a massive cleanup effort on Skid Row after the Los Angeles County Health Department sighted the area for its buildup of filth and hazardous waste.
We've come across a number of items throughout this operation. Contaminants, human feces, and hypodermic needles and that kind of thing.
Crews cordoned off a six-block area and removed items from the sidewalks, including those belonging to homeless residents. Items that were deemed not to be a public health hazard will be held in storage for a minimum of 90 days, as required by law. 30 years ago, on June 23rd, a Chinese-American man by the name of Vincent Chin was beaten to death in Detroit by two men who blamed him for the loss of jobs in the U.S. auto industry.
They mistakenly thought he was Japanese, and they took out their frustrations on him with a baseball bat. On the night of his bachelor party, just before he was to be married, both perpetrators were charged with and pled guilty to manslaughter. They were fined just $3,000 and given three years probation.
Garcetti joined Asian-Pacific-American community leaders to commemorate the 30th anniversary of Chin's death and to declare it as Vincent Chin Day in Los Angeles for the impact that event has had on our nation's Asian-American civil rights movement. The LEPD's Topanga Narcotics Enforcement Detail conducted a lengthy investigation into the illegal sale of marijuana that resulted in two medical marijuana dispensaries, Queen Joy and Green Magic, both on Ventura Boulevard, being shut down.
As you see the evidence here, when you look at the Compassionate Use Act, this is far cry from what the voters approved in 1996 with the Compassionate Use Act. This is a profit-making enterprise, and all they're doing is making money and causing havoc in the communities.
A private residence was also served with a search warrant. Three adults were arrested and a combined $50,000 were seized from the two businesses and the residence. Family members of hidden-run victim Paul Helfin joined Councilmember Mitchell Englander and LEPD officials in asking for the public's help in finding the driver who struck and killed the 76-year-old cyclist on June 8th on Nordoff Street in North Hills at around 2:00 a.m.
He was a dedicated athlete. The truth is, we expected him to outlive all of us. He had no expiration date.
The city is offering a $50,000 reward for help in solving the case. The driver is believed to have been driving a 2007 to 2012 Nissan Sentra. If you have any information on this case, you are asked to call the Valley Traffic Division at 818-644-8000. Each year around this time, people in cities across the country mark Juneteenth, which commemorates the end of slavery. Anita Bennett takes us to the celebration here locally in Lemur Park. With music, food, and a Texas-style rodeo show, Angelenos gather to mark an important day in U.S. history.
Today, traditionally, African-Americans all over the country celebrate that final freedom.
That final freedom dates back to the end of slavery and these real-life museum artifacts from the Atlantic slave trade. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers rode to Galveston, Texas with news that the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed two years earlier. Up until that point, the slaves in Texas had no idea they'd been freed.
You have to understand how communications were in the 1860s, and there was a significant separation land-wise from Texas over to your other southern states.
Now, Juneteenth has spread from Texas to every pocket of the country, including here in Lemur Park. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
In this week's list of things to do, two free film screenings and drumming outdoors.
The California African-American Museum and Heal the Bay will host the screening of the documentary Whitewash on Saturday, July 7th, starting at 1:00 p.m. The film is an exploration of race in America from the perspective of black surfers. A post-screening discussion will follow with the film's participants. All screenings are free and open to the public, but you are asked to RSVP by calling More info can also be found at caamuseum.org. And if you're in more of a cowboy kind of mood, head on over to the Autry National Center on Saturday, July 7th at noon for a double feature. Two Gene Autry films are screened on the first Saturday of every month in the Imagination Gallery's Western Legacy Theater. The 1936 film Guns and Guitars features Autry as one half of a two-member traveling medicine show that lands in the midst of a Texas cattle war. The 1949 film Riders in the Sky stars Autry as an investigator who helps a gal whose father is falsely accused of murdering a gambler. The Autry is located at 4,700 Western Heritage Way. Go to theautry.org for more information. Also on Saturday from 10:00 to 11:30 in the morning, enjoy a taste of Latin rhythms at Drum Downtown. Everyone is invited to join in for a unique group drumming experience on the Music Center Plaza. The free event is perfect for percussionists of all skill levels. The Music Center Plaza is located at 135 North Grand Avenue. Go to musiccenter.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The LEPD put on quite a show at its ninth annual Still Saving Lives Car Show with rare vehicles on display, as well as a special performance from the LEPD Motorcycle Drill Team.
It was a feast for the eyes, especially for car lovers. More than 300 classic, exotic, and antique cars, as well as motorcycles, were on display at the Ninth Annual Still Saving Lives Car Show. The free event at Warner Center Park in Woodland Hills was hosted by the LEPD's Valley Traffic Division and the Valley Traffic Advisory Council, along with Councilman Dennis Zine's office.
We live across the street, so we thought, why not come and support the LEPD?
While the event was free, silent auctions helped the Valley Traffic Division raise money for programs like child safety seat giveaways and inspections, as well as the Sober Graduation Program, which educates teens on the hazards of drinking and driving.
Things we need to educate the public that the city can't buy as a result of budget concerns.
But the only concern on this day? How to make time to see each and every car on display.
We've got George Burris' cars out here, a number of cars. We hear one in the background. It looks like a Camaro.
What goes through my mind is how old I am, because I remember a lot of these cars when I was a teenager.
Even those born in the new millennium appreciate the cars of their parents' generation.
It's really nice. You have Corvettes, you have Hondas, you have Dodson's, you have Chevys, everything.
Among the cars on display was the black and white involved in the 1997 North Hollywood shootout. For something else you don't see every day, the LEPD Motorcycle Drill Team in formation, engaged in a carefully choreographed ballet, wowing and delighting crowds. For those who missed this year's event, mark your calendar for next year.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
Hey, buddy. You with the stupid hat. Come here, closer. No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the street so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally. And you know what else? You can get a citation. And you can be towed.
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Hey, look out for the pothole.
Hi, I'm Craig Irwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Irwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Power City Hot
Today is Tuesday, July 3rd. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. My name is Herb Wesson, and I will be today's presiding officer. The Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. All of our meetings are open to the public, and the public is waiting. Welcome. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Alakum buskayino cardnas Englander Garcetti wizarkares krikorian labanj parks peri reas rosendal zain wesson timeras present akor Mr. President.
Alrighty then, first order of business.
Approval the minutes.
Kurets moves, Buskayino seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Krikorian moves, Rosendale seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, I want to ask everybody to rise for the salute to our flag, and I'm going to ask former member Janice Hahn, current Congress member Janice Hahn, to go to Mr. Kurets's mic and ask you to lead this body in our flag salute.
Thank you. Thank you. We all, uh, thank you. It's great to be back. We pledge allegiance every day in the United States House of Representatives, every day when we go into session. And I've been asked to lead that a couple times, so it feels really good to be back here, leading this great body in a great pledge. Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, someday.
Thank you, Congress member. Hahn, okay, with that said, members, if I can direct your attention towards the agenda. Madam Clerk, I want to go on the record before we begin. And Mr. City Attorney, please pay attention. Every action, every action that is taken today will be deemed forthwith. So with that said, Mr. City Attorney, or Madam Clerk, do I have to restate it, or can I make this one blanket statement now that every item acted on by the council today will go forthwith?
Yes, your one statement is fine, Mr. President.
With that said, let us, uh, let us begin. Let's start with the first section, items, uh, 1 through 3.
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. There's requests to continue item 3 to August 3rd.
Without objection. What about, are there any cards on items 1 or 2?
Yes, cards of both items.
Okay, so before we go on to the next section of items, members, we have a rather long agenda, but just because our agenda is long, it does not have to mean that our day has to be extremely long. With that said, Madam Clerk, let us go through the next section of items, which I believe are items 4 through 43.
Items 4 through 43 are items for which public hearings have been held. There's a technical correction for item 42. Instead of Bureau of Engineering, the instruction should be for Department of Public Works.
Okay, that's fine. Members, I, Ms. Perry?
12.
Was that 12?
Yes.
Ms. Perry, item 12. Mr. Englander?
18, please.
Mr. Englander, 18. Any other specials? Okay, on these items, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us to what section? In fact, I believe items 44 through 62?
Yes, items 44 through 62 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection. Those items are now before us. Do we have cards on those items?
Cards on item 46 and 53.
46, 53. Specials, members? Specials, members? Okay, on the remaining items, let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we did not indicate that Mr. Parks is here, and he was not on that, uh, that vote. Should we vote on it again, or can we just add him to that, or what's?
Yes, we can just add him, because it doesn't change the outcome of the vote.
Okay, because two of those, two of those issues were ordinances, and we need the 12 votes.
Yes, well, we can revote, Mr. President.
Revote? Okay, on those items, we're going to revote, members, so let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Item 63 is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold it on the desk?
Let's hold it on the desk until I can have a discussion with the Chair of Budget and Finance. That now brings us to items 64 through 66?
Yes, on the Yes, on the supplemental agenda, items 64 through 66 are items for which public hearings have not, have been held.
Have been held?
Yes, have been held.
Okay, so then on that, our members, are there any specials? Mr. Zine?
66.
Mr. Zine on 66. Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue on those items, remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 67 through 77 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Members, specials?
75.
Mr. Ro, Bill, Mr. Rosendahl, 65?
75.
Wait, 65, Bill, we already voted on that?
No, no, I said 75. I thought we were on that one.
Any other members? Mr. Corretz?
Number 69.
Mr. Corretz, 69. Mr. Garcia?
Uh, number 70, please, Mr. President.
73, four minutes.
7, 0.
7D?
Yep, 70.
Well, I promise you, when we, by the time we get back from the break, I will have had my ears cleaned out so that I could hear better when we meet again. Do we have cards on these items?
No cards.
No cards. Okay, on the remaining items, members, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, where does that bring us on today's agenda?
To presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, what I want to do is, before I, and I, I see you, Mr. Buscaino, and I'll get to you. If we could take items, no, items 1 and 2 have been held by cards?
Yes, for cards.
Okay, so I'll, I will scratch that plan and we will go into, uh, presentations, but before that, Mr. Buscaino, for an announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just want to give a shout-out to my son and daughter who are watching live on Channel 35. Mattel and Gia, I love ya. Mattel's working on his art projects, and I know Gia's dancing across the, uh, the den, the floor, so I love ya, and, uh, thanks for watching.
Mr. Buscaino, you, you force them when they could be watching Yo Gabba Gabba, or something like that, you force them to watch Channel 35. Yeah, you're, you're, their grandparents need to do an intervention. All right, at this point in time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Corretz for a presentation. And Mr. Corretz, since it's not a musical entertainer, I hope that this will be a timely... For those of you that are tom, for, Tom, uh, anything theatric, it takes Mr. Corretz a half hour, so this should not do that. And it's good to see you, good to see you again, Tom. Okay, Mr. Corretz?
I promise you, uh, neither I or, uh, our honoree will sing.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'm delighted that we're honoring my good friend, Tom Moxley, upon his retirement, after many illustrious years of service with Ironworkers Local 433. Tom has been a tremendous hero for countless working people and their families, and indeed the entire Southern California region owes much to his devoted and courageous leadership with the Southern California Labor Movement, and for whose sake he has fought and championed, negotiated, and persevered for nearly 40 years. So it's my honor to salute him, and I'm happy to say we're joined by many of his friends, allies, and admirers, who were able to come today to join in this ceremony. And to all of you here, we welcome you and thank you for your efforts and your support for Tom today. As a worker, Tom has helped construct some of our great local buildings and bridges, and as a labor leader, he has guided his union as well as other unions in the building trades. Ironworkers 433 has elected Tom to various posts, including Sergeant-at-Arms, trustee, elected board member, excuse me, executive board member, Recording Secretary and Vice President, and in June of 2000, he was elected as Business Agent, a post which he's held for the past 12 years. During that time, he's also served as President of the L.A. Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, Vice President of the Southern California Maritime Trades Council, Delegate to the L.A. County and Orange County Federations of Labor, Member of South County Labor, Delegate to the Riverside San Bernardino Building and Construction Trades Council. At a time of local, regional, national, and global economic crisis, Tom has played a huge part in protecting and improving the quality of life of California and Californians. As a leader, he's been fiercely dedicated, tough but gracious, principled and compassionate, a friend to any and every working person. Tom is therefore considered close family by his union brothers and sisters, but he also has his own literal family, um, who is here today as well. Tom has been married for nearly 40 years to the love of his life, his high school sweetheart, Donna, and Tom and Donna have two cherished children, several wonderful, seven wonderful grandchildren. So I'm pleased to wish Tom the mightiest and sweetest of retirements in the many years to come, enjoyed with his devoted family and friends, and we just want to thank you for all that you've done, so. And we have a few speakers. I, I'm particularly thrilled to have the first one, our former colleague, Janice Hahn, who has graced us with a return for this purpose.
The gentle lady from Washington, D.C., now, via San Pedro.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, uh, members of this esteemed, uh, Los Angeles City Council. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Corretz, for allowing me to say a few words. I haven't been back, uh, for almost a year. I, I was elected to Congress on July 11th, and I have not been back. And I was, I was wanting a reason to come back and, uh, say hello to all my former colleagues, all the wonderful city staff that I miss all the time. And when Tom Moxley called me last week and wondered if I wouldn't, uh, say a few words, uh, at, at this auspicious occasion, I was very pleased to realize that I was actually in town this week from Washington, D.C., and, and was happy to do that. I'm glad to see my predecessor, Joe Buscaino, sitting there, uh, in, taking his rightful place among this body. I know he's doing a great job representing, uh, the 15th Council District, and I hope you are appreciating all that he is adding to, to, uh, this, uh, council body. You know, I don't have a written speech today. I wanted to just come and say from the bottom of my heart, as much of what you, you read, Paul, that, uh, Tom Moxley is, uh, first and foremost, a family man. Uh, he's a union man, a family man, he's a godly man. And, you know, we always, many of us who have fought long and hard for the working men and women, uh, of this city, of this country, for Tom, it is individuals. It's not just the mass of working men and women. Tom Moxley cares about the individual man, the individual woman. He is such a caring person, uh, he has such compassion, and I believe that that's what has driven his work for over 40 years in the union, was making sure that he knew people by their names, by their families, and that is why, I believe, every day, he worked so hard to improve their lives, to improve their working conditions, and improving their benefits, because he knew what it meant to them, he knew what it meant to their families, and he knew what it meant to their quality of life, uh, as an Angelino and as an American. So, uh, I did want to make this a reason that I came back to the Los Angeles City Council was to present, um, an official certificate of congressional recognition, uh, to Tom Moxley. In recognition for your 40 years of outstanding service to the labor community, it gives me great pleasure to salute your efforts in improving the lives of working men and women across the United States. Best wishes on a well-deserved retirement. Thank you, Tom. I love you so much. I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you. And we want to thank you for the passage of the Transportation Bill. That's gonna, that's gonna make, that's gonna make Tom smile, that's gonna make Dick, uh, in the back smile, because that should help us put people to work. And with, uh, building trades at unemployment of, uh, slightly above 40%, we need those jobs, and we needed them yesterday. So tell the President, sign it. With that said, Mr. Garcia?
You want, I'll defer if there's other speakers you have first, and then speak after.
Okay, Mr. Corretz, go right ahead.
I have two other speakers, uh, great leaders from the building trades, uh...
Since they're my friends, I will allow it.
Ron Miller and Dick Slosson, uh, whichever would like to speak first.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilmembers. Well, I gotta say, there's probably not, uh, one office here that Tom Moxley hasn't came and visited, for either a good reason or a bad reason, but, uh, it's always about labor and the working man. So, on behalf of the 140,000 craftsmen and women of the building trades and working people everywhere in the city, I just want to congratulate Tom on his retirement. Thank you.
And good to see you, Ron. The distinguished gentleman, Dick Slosson. Come on.
Tom, congratulations. Good morning, Councilmembers, Mr. President. You know, I've known Tom for probably close to 30 years now. First met out on job sites, uh, always, uh, saw him as someone that was enthusiastic and knowledgeable about what he had to do each day. And then, working with him over the years as a business representative for the ironworkers and President of the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, uh, I gained a deep understanding of what Tom was all about, I think. And I can tell you that, uh, he has had pride in what he has done over the years, working for his membership, was always enthusiastic about being involved in the day-to-day issues of negotiating contracts, representing his membership on issues that might arise on job sites, safety being one of those major issues. And the enthusiasm that he had showed in everything that, that he did, uh, over the years. I couldn't have had, uh, someone better to work with, uh, on behalf of the Building and Construction Trades Council, and I know his, uh, knowledge and, uh, experience will be sorely missed by both the Building Trades Council and the members of his own organization. And I'm welcoming him to the ranks of the retired now, and, uh, but, but I'm sure he will keep busy in day-to-day things that might arise, especially political issues that are vitally important to all citizens and to the labor movement and working people everywhere. But, on that note, I'd like to congratulate Tom Moxley on his retirement for the great work that he has done over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Hahn, in your honor, as we proceed with this presentation, I will now call on the distinguished gentleman from the 13th District.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President, and, uh, it's, it is wonderful to have Janice Hahn back. It feels, uh, so natural to have you back in chambers, and thanks for letting me sit in your old desk here. I think you've moved between here and there over the years. Um, and, and I think it was put very well by both Dick and Ron, but let me just say, Tom, you are an extraordinary person. I remember my father, after he left public service, one day called you, and, uh, he said, "What are you running for? Gil will support you." And he said, "I'm not running for anything, I just want access to a building site up the hill from here." And you got him, uh, on the building site when Disney Hall was being constructed, and he started a whole new career, taking pictures of ironworkers. And the appreciation that he learned about what it takes to be an ironworker, uh, to go out there, and, you know, the guys would haze him, they'd take him on crossbeams as far out as he could to see whether or not, and he never flinched, and so they said they were okay. And, you know, nobody was allowed on-site, photographers, besides official photographer, but the morning, you know, he got there, and a couple guards got in his face and said, "I'm sorry, you're not allowed here if you're not official photographer." And he said, "Well, I'm here with the ironworkers," and the guy's just flinched and said, "I'm sorry, go ahead," like this, because nobody messes with the ironworkers, and nobody messes with them partially because of you, Tom, because you made sure that there was good career paths for folks that could, knew exactly what you did. When you became a journeyman, you went right up through the ranks. Um, I know you became a Sergeant-at-Arms, and, uh, ironwork is already tough enough to be elected, uh, three years in as Sergeant-at-Arms means that you were the toughest of the tough, and you fought those battles, both physically and around here, to make sure that we've done the right thing with our PLAs and everything else. And your legacy will not just be the buildings we see around Southern California, but it'll be the lives for each of these families who've been able to provide for themselves through their own hard work and through their own hands. So congratulations, and we love you, and have a happy retirement.
The distinguished gentle lady from the 9th District.
Well, Tom, um, I know we had a little chat this morning about your, your three days into your retirement. I hope it's going well. It's going well? Okay. Uh, the ironworkers are special, um, and I can tell you firsthand how special they are, um, going back to Richard, and to Robbie, and to you, and, you know, to Ron, all you guys, because you've shaped the skyline for the entire city, uh, and transformed it. But what's best about you and, and the ironworkers is your willingness to reach back and pull people from disadvantaged communities and give them a chance to learn this trade, too. And you, you started that effort early on, uh, before anybody else even thought about it, and I, I'm deeply, deeply appreciative. I hope that, uh, you have a wonderful time with your wife in your retirement, and you do everything that you put off for the last 40 years, uh, as quickly as possible. Uh, but just, whenever you come into town, you can look up and you can feel proud, because everything that you see, you had a hand in. So congratulations for 40-plus years.
The distinguished gentleman from the 7th District. Richard, that's you.
Tom, uh, congratulations on your retirement, and most importantly, thank you so much for the service you provided to the city. All of my colleagues, uh, touched on, uh, key points, uh, that, uh, are, are critical, and I, I think people, uh, many times do not think of ironworkers when they're thinking of what makes L.A. L.A. Uh, but, uh, without the ironworkers, L.A. would not be L.A. It would be something completely different. Uh, and, uh, as Jan pointed out, uh, I remember when, uh, Mayor Bradley's vision was to create a skyline in Los Angeles, and, uh, he couldn't have done that without partnerships with the ironworkers. Uh, I want to thank you for your support over the years, uh, since the first run for office, uh, when I ran against the union president, the ironworkers were with me, uh, and, uh, they believed in, in, uh, in, in, uh, my philosophy, uh, and that is to pro-union, uh, good-paying jobs for people of Los Angeles, and that's what's, the best way to build the middle class. Uh, that's what you believe in, that's what you provided, that's what your workers, uh, give to L.A. in terms of their consumerism. Uh, they provide, uh, an economic force in and of themselves. But I also want to congratulate you for 38 years of a beautiful marriage to Donna, uh, and your son is here as well, Tom. Um, you know, it's hard to be the leader that you have been, uh, and not take away from the family, and, and it's a tribute to you to be able to accomplish all of that, uh, and, uh, have your loving wife at your side since high school. Uh, that's a tremendous accomplishment, so congratulations for that, as well as all the other accomplishments. And I've noticed that the biggest smile of all is Donna's, uh, because she now has you, maybe a little bit more, but I have a feeling you'll be, you'll be hanging around, uh, sticking your fingers and, uh, your nose into, uh, business that, that still needs to continue, because that is not something you do for pay. It's something you do because of a passion and a philosophy. Uh, thank you so much for having that passion, thank you so much for believing in the cause. We love you. Take care.
Yeah, Richard, uh, Tom's wife is smiling now, because it's only been three days. Call back in 30 days and see. Tom, you're gonna be missed. You were a great guy, but more importantly, you were a class act. Everybody, can we give this great man another round of applause? He, he deserves it. He deserves it.
Well, now, I'm gonna give Mr. Wesson a heart attack by reading this entire lengthy resolution. No, I'm actually not going to do that. But I just want to say that without a doubt, you've been the greatest friend for working men and women that we've seen in Southern California in the last 30 years or so. And we all appreciate all the great work that you've done, as well as being a good friend to all of us and a great leader. So thank you so much, and it's our honor to recognize all the great work that you've done and wish you well in your retirement.
I guess it's my turn now, huh?
Let's give it up for Tom.
Well, Mr. President and distinguished members of this council, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, those that were before you. When I came to you, it was straightforward, didn't pull any punches. We've agreed to disagree on a few items, although I always thought I was right. But it was all about not making jobs, but careers for not just Angelenos, but all of Southern California and California, the United States. It's all about raising people up. And I thank you for helping the building trades do that. We're only one piece of that puzzle to get everybody employed and in a career path. I want to take this time to thank my wife. You said it very well. There's the highest rate of divorce is between politicians and union leaders. And I thank her for allowing me to spend countless hours out there and always being supportive. My son is here, and I thank him. He's a second-year apprentice IBW member. So he's doing a great job. But he's not just doing a great job learning the trade, but he's doing a great job in being a good union man and learning that part, too. To Jerry and Joel, thank you. To Paul, I've worked with Paul when he was up in Sacramento, down here, over there, along with you, Herb, with Richard, and, you know, those musical seats. Can we do away with term limits? I'd be glad to do that.
Alrighty.
But all of you, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I don't think I'm going away. I think you might see me here if there's some issue that I have in disagreement with somebody and want to come down and speak my piece. And thank you for allowing that we live in a country that we can speak our mind, although we may not agree. We can sit and have conversation and work together to work out that, because we all are working for one thing, and that's to better the lives of all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Alrighty, Mr. Englander, are you ready for our next presentation?
Mr. Englander, why do I have a feeling that you're surrounded by brilliant young minds?
Oh, you have no idea. That is the understatement of the decade. It is a great day today in Los Angeles when we can claim that one of our schools and a group of our students from our own community is the best in America. The Kings have nothing on them. We're proud of the Cup, but let me tell you about these guys. Today, we congratulate the students, coaches, teachers, and parents of Granada Hills Charter High School on winning again the 2012 National Academic Decathlon for the second consecutive year. I'm so proud of this amazing achievement by the brilliant kids in the Granada Hills Academic Decathlon team. Winning the National Academic Decathlon is truly a remarkable achievement that these amazing young people will be able to carry with them for the rest of their lives. Knowing how great Granada Hills Charter High School students, teachers, leadership, and parents are, it should be no surprise that they did it again. When Granada Hills Charter won the national title last year, we installed a street sign really high up on a light pole, knowing full well that we would need room under the sign for consecutive years. And yesterday, we joined together to put yet another year up under the sign, saying that they are the national champions again. The reason this achievement was so important is that it sends a message to every student, parent, and teacher in our community that by working together, studying, persevering, kids can get a great education here in Los Angeles and reach their dreams. They have put in countless hours of work. They study and practice up to 12 hours a day and skipped winter and spring vacations. Granada Hills Charter High is the largest charter school in the nation, and it consistently ranks among the top schools in the region under the exceptional leadership of its executive director, Brian Bauer, and its excellent teaching staff. The Granada Hills team didn't just win the National Academic Decathlon for the second year in a row. They dominated this year. This year, they scored the highest point tally by far in the competition's history. They beat out teams from 30 other states and one from London in the finals in Albuquerque, New Mexico. The Granada Hills team members also ruled the individual portion of the competition with seven students among the top nine finishers. Four of them broke the 9,000-point barrier. Sean Wajibi, who scored 9,441, the highest individual score in the entire competition, who's here today as well. Lev Tauss and Mahmoud Mahud and Jimmy Wu also achieved the highest scores. Granada Hills Charter High School is the first charter school, and now the second in the 30-year history of the decathlon to capture the national title. So I'd like to call your attention to each of the recipients, the winners. Christian Goguchi, Stella Lee, Priscilla Lu, Kimberly Lee, Mahmoud, Hamidad Mahmoud, Lev Tauss, Julia Wall, Sean Wajibi, and Jimmy Wu. If we can congratulate our students on this incredible and awesome achievement. In addition, we have our coaches Spencer Wolf and Nick Weber, who we cannot do it without them. It's Weber, is it? We cannot do it without them. I would do really well in the Academic Decathlon within the names category. Matt Arnold, who could not join us today. Fortunately, he got married this past Sunday, and so he is out on his honeymoon, so he cannot be here. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to congratulate and welcome the 2012 National Academic Decathlon Champions to the council chambers. Speaking on their behalf, which one, come on up. I'd like you to say a few words as well.
All right. Hello, everyone. Competing in Academic Decathlon, it covers 10 different subjects. So spending that many hours in school, 12 hours a day, missing out on winter break, summer break, like, you know, missing out with your friends, it kind of humbled us and it made us very gracious for everything that has happened to us. And, you know, sometimes it kind of sucked, missing out with your friends, but we kind of formed our own family, and it was really worth it in the end. But we really couldn't have gotten this far without our school staff supporting us all the way, our school administration, our coaches, our parents, our teachers. But also, very important, is Mr. Englander, Mr. Councilman Englander, who has been continuously supportive of us this entire time. He came out last November, I remember that, to install that first street sign. He came out yesterday again to install a second street sign. And we just really are very gracious and very thankful for everything District 12 has done for us and everything that Mr. Englander has done for us. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have one council member who'd like to add his good wishes. And is it true that Councilmember Englander was one of your coaches, too? Yeah, you helped with the C students, correct?
Absolutely. And thank you for making the point of that. A lot of people think the Academic Decathlon team is made up of all the best and the brightest, and they are, by far. But there are also categories of A students, B students, and C students that have to work together equally. So a lot of people don't realize that. Thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Buscayno would like to add his good wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Englander, thanks so much for bringing these fine academics, decathlon champions to City Council. We are so proud of you. I just want to stand and recognize you and let you know we love you. And we are just so proud of you in the city of Los Angeles. I had an opportunity in our district to bring forward some of our champions at Narbonne at football and girls' basketball. But this is extra special to know that you are the best in the nation and to stand and congratulate you. We thank you for representing your community and your school, and thank you, Mitch, for bringing these fine students before us. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again. You make us proud. Thank you. A round of applause for our champions. Thank you. We will now turn to our general public comment. Our first speaker is going to be Candido Maris. After that will be Donna Pearman, and then John Walsh. Would you like to come forward? Well, the sergeant-at-arms will make it, so you can come forward through the rope. You're first for public comment. Mr. Candido Maris, and then Donna, you'll be second.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President, Candido Maris, Roland Verge, and John Camara, members of Van Nuys St. Elizabeth Knights of Columbus. We're going to be proud to work with Mr. Richard Alarcon. We're looking forward to getting him back in the Assembly. For those who do not know, Mr. Alarcon is a strong proponent of small business and building businesses and working with the unions together to make the city a great city. But we're also here to wish you all a happy Fourth of July. And in 2006, the mayor and Mr. Weezer, Councilman Weezer, introduced us to a great American hero. His name was Guy Gabadon. He was known as the Piper. He was from East LA. And what a lot of people don't know is that he captured 1,500 Japanese by himself and that it took years before Congress recognized him with the medals that he should have received back in the '40s. He unfortunately has passed on, but he did receive his medals. And so, Mr. President, we'd like to present, as members of the Knights of Columbus, which our motto is charity, unity, fraternity, and patriotism, this T-shirt in honor of Mr. Guy Gabadon, which states, "Guy Gabadon, World War II American Hero," and it has the date, "United States Marine Corps." We've heard of Audrey Murphy, we've heard of John Wayne, even though John Wayne never served a day in the service, but he portrayed a great Marine and he was a great American. But this gentleman was a great American, and I think it's time that he gets the recognition in this city, and hopefully one day we can do that. So, Mr. President, I know Mr. Weezer is not here, so if we can give this to you, then you'll make sure that he gets that. And again, thank you very much. Have a wonderful Fourth of July, and thank you very much for this time.
Thank you for doing that. We very much appreciate it.
Who can we give that to?
The sergeant-at-arms right behind you will take it. And then Donna Pearman is next. And after that will be John Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning. I never see this again, to see you up there. Anyway, my legs hurt, and I'm a little winded trying to come all the way from, you know, downtown. Anyway, I'm tired of having to take the subway, walking down Pershing Square. And so, anyway, it's not a reasonable accommodation for the disabled, sick, or elderly to come from the valley all the way downtown. For all we know, you could have had not enough people, and then after spending two or three hours and walking eight blocks to find out that you didn't have a quorum, that would have been terrible, or have a horrendous journey, and you move an agenda item to another day that we need to speak on to another day that we can't come. Or we could have taken a half hour to three quarters of an hour by bus, or 15 to 20 minutes by car to Van Nuys City Hall, where any of that would really be no hardship. There's no hill to walk down by. This one, we do have to walk down a hill. And there's benches to sit on in Van Nuys, but very strange streets across the street. So it's a big difference between going to City Hall and Van Nuys, going to Spring Street. And for some people, it's very extremely difficult. So we need to try to bring this, I'm down here today, but we really need to bring this back down to Van Nuys City Hall. And anyway, I want everyone to vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor, by the way, because I think he'd be the most fair man, and he was the one that wanted to, one of the four that wanted this, saves Van Nuys City Hall. So we're not stopping fighting this. We're gonna keep on fighting it till we get Van Nuys City Hall back. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. John Walsh will be our next speaker. After Mr. Walsh will be John Brown, and then we have Mitra Daroksen.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is my worst nightmare is occurring right now. Herb Wesson, President Wesson, where are you? Every night, I fall asleep and I have a nightmare that Wesson turns into Garcetti at City Council and I have to speak in front of him. But this, and I wake up in a cold sweat. But today, it's really happening. Have mercy on me. John Walsh, of anybody but Garcetti for mayor? Last Friday, I came here and told you that a group of Holocaust deniers were going to rent the Vine Street Theater on Saturday night. They did. We have video of the marquee. I asked Garcetti, I asked all 10 of you to help us, to say something about us, about this monstrosity that was happening on Hollywood Boulevard. Everybody was silent. Welcome to Hollywood, the Holocaust deniers. But we organized the demonstration, and guess what happened? You can read it on our website. They canceled the showing of their hate video and left. We don't even know anything about them, but I just want to say to every Jew in this city, think twice before you vote for Eric Garcetti, because when the Holocaust deniers can come on Hollywood Boulevard and do whatever they want, there's something seriously wrong in this city. And I want to say how sorry I am about the treatment of Mr. Zahnheiser, who was called an idiot by the mayor when he brought up the issue of his girlfriend leaving his home. In other words, the mayor actually booted her out. They had a big argument, and he kicked her out. Everybody knows this, and the only reason it appeared in the LA Times is because Lou Parker hired a public relations agent and they released it. The LA Times was keeping it quiet. HollywoodHighlands.org to find out what's really happening.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And next is John Brown. After that will be Mitra Daroksen, and then after that is Nick Simpson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Well, I'll tell you what. You have handled this like a Hollywood political... It's ridiculous, guys. It's like some kind of political thing to get publicity, a publicity stunt. Good Lord, what are you doing? Hurt people, sick people, all in here. How many of you are here? My God, it's ridiculous. So I got something to say. Maybe I'll sing it. Hey, council members, you better take a talk, because if you don't join the people, you're not gonna get our votes. Poor redneck parents, when you really love your kid, show them that you love them with the five-finger lid. You can smoke it, you can eat it, you can drink it in your tea. It's better than Excedrin. Just try it and you'll see. You're so stupid when you think old laws are best, when the only thing that harbors is a danger of arrest. I'm sick of it, guys. Drop this thing. Drop it. Get it out of our way. Get it out of our way. This is to all the old paraplegics out there, maybe a veteran, maybe an old warrior that would like to send an email to these guys and tell them how you feel. And yeah, old warriors like me, I'm sick of the way you try to tell us we have to take morphine instead of marijuana. I want a marijuana dispensary on both sides of me. And when I come out the door, it's ridiculous, guys. Do something good for the city. This city is so boring. And there's a few things happening here, but it's all in Hollywood. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mitra Darokson, Nick Simpson, and Kobe Lopez, please come forward.
Good morning.
I don't see Nick or Kobe. Gesco.
Good morning. My name is Mitra Derrick Sean. I'm a student. I'm a registered voter. I've lived in Los Angeles all of my life. Thank you, guys, for being here today and listening to our many concerns. I hope you enjoy your upcoming summer break. I hope that while you are on break, you keep in mind the fact that seriously ill patients do not get a break from their pain and ailments, unless, of course, they're free to medicate with high-quality medical marijuana, and they have safe access to this medicine. After reviewing a large series of trials in 1997, the U.S. Society for Neuroscience concluded that substances derived from marijuana could benefit more than 97 million Americans. Another 1999 study commissioned by the White House, conducted by the Institute of Medicine, recognized the role that medical cannabis can play in the treatment of chronic pain. After nausea and vomiting, chronic pain was the condition cited most often to the IOM study team as a medical use for marijuana. From 1975 to February 2011, there have been nearly 300 studies showing that cannabinoids and cannabis can help patients experiencing chronic pain. Please help patients receive safe access so they may have a better quality of life for a minimal cost. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day and a wonderful Fourth of July.
Thank you. Okay, Nick Simpson, Kobe Lopez, Daniel Sosa, please come forward. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Nick Simpson, fellow patient. I understand, like I've said before, how we as taxpayers and voters can vote for you, and then you guys take laws that we've passed and take them right up from underneath us. You guys aren't going to get reelected doing stuff like that. So if you want to stay in office, keep the clubs open, keep them safe, don't let us go to the black market. Thank you.
Thank you. Kobe, Daniel Sosa, Megan Ryan. I don't see, Daniel, and I don't see Megan. Yes, sir.
How are you guys doing today?
Good.
Just want to thank you again for the time to speak here. Just wanted to let you know, you know, we're not going to give up the fight for this safe access. It's not a temporary thing, you know? We're compassionate about it. Like I said, you guys have a break coming up. You know, dedicate five, 10 minutes to the internet. I'm sure you're all on the computer multiple times a day. Just, I mean, don't Google a crazy story, Google some facts, see, you know, lives that it affects, lives that it helps. And not just older people, you know, you think we just want to get high. Look at the young kids. Look at the babies that can't speak, that can't walk, you know, one-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds. You'll be surprised, there's, I mean, countless number of stories out there that have been verified, that are true, that are known to be facts. And, I mean, it's just, it's a powerful medicine. I'm personally tired of it being called a drug. It's a natural plant. We introduce no outside, you know, chemicals to this plant. Therefore, how it is a drug, I mean, is broccoli a drug? Is corn a drug? I mean, we all eat them. They're different plants. I mean, we introduce dangerous cancer-causing chemicals to almost every vegetable you buy in the market, and fruit, and meat, and everything. But all those plants, we consider food. But one powerful plant such as medical marijuana, we can't consider medicine. I mean, we're 2012 now. Let's move on with the future. The world's going forward. Let's just take this ban off the table, think about it, you know, just, I don't know, look at the facts and let them speak for themselves. And I want you guys to have a happy break, happy Fourth of July, be safe, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kobe. All right, we're gonna... One second, Daniel, one second. It's my understanding, Madam Clerk, that concerns raised about Item 12 have been dealt with?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so members, we're going to vote on Item 12. On Item 12, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Thank you. Following Megan Ryan will be Alexi Keats.
I'm Daniel Sosa, but I'm here again to urge you guys to take this ban off the agenda completely. It's an irresponsible piece of legislation. If you guys pass any kind of ban, it would not be in the best interest of the people of the city of Los Angeles. So I strongly, strongly urge you guys to completely take any type of ban completely off of the agenda. It would be totally moving backwards. It's not the direction we want to move in. Please, please, just take it off the agenda. Thank you for listening. Take it off. It has no, that law, neither, any kind of ban on medical marijuana collectives has no place in the city of Los Angeles. There are hundreds and hundreds of thousands of patients who are medical cannabis patients. There are tens of thousands of patients in the city of Los Angeles who are terminally ill, who rely on medical marijuana. Please, please, do not ban medical cannabis collectives. Don't do it. Take them off the agenda completely, please. Just take them off of the agenda totally. Could somebody please step up to the plate and do that? Please, take them off the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Following Mr. Keats will be Jess Thompson. Ms. Ryan.
Good morning, Council. I'm here to ask you to please remove any bans on collectives from any future agendas. Please oppose any future bans. I know some of you are family people. You have families that you care about. Some of you may have daughters that are my age. You may have nieces that are my age. And God forbid that something happens to them, like has happened to me, that happens to thousands of other women in this city every day, all the time. Sometimes the perpetrators are people in positions of authority, Bustamante, teachers. God forbid. In 2002, I was drugged, I was violently raped, and I was dumped in a parking lot in Van Nuys. I thought I was going to die. That's the first time I've ever told anyone, and for every rape that is reported, there are three that are unreported. In the name of public safety, you're trying to ban medical cannabis. Medical cannabis is the only reason I'm able to sleep at night. It's the only reason I can eat food. It's the only reason I'm able to function. Doctors tried to put me on drugs that wanted, they made me want to kill myself. I was diagnosed with depression, anxiety, post-traumatic stress disorder. I'm young. I was 19. I'm beautiful, and I wanted to kill myself. I have a family that loves me. Do you think they want that? I think they would much rather see me smoke pot and be a happy, beautiful person for the rest of my life. Please don't take that away from me.
Following, following Mr. Thompson, following Mr. Thompson will be Adrian Gross. Mr. Keats.
Good morning, Council. Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Alexi Keats. And tomorrow, we celebrate the creation of the most groundbreaking political document in human history. The Declaration of Independence is a paper of change and of challenge, of perseverance, understanding, and the willingness to see beyond hierarchies into a nation of, by, and for the people. And yet, it's a paper made of hemp. The ordinances to ban collectives in Los Angeles currently awaiting a vote stand against the purpose of that declaration. They do so by stripping safe, affordable access to a safe, affordable medicine from those who need it most. Should those bans come into effect, a disastrous toll will be taken on the sick and suffering of this city. What's more, the strong foundations of a burgeoning industry will crack. Poll after poll, statistic after statistic, remind us that medical marijuana legislation has a positive effect on communities, that safe access decreases the overall use of harsher substances, and, most of all, that the majority of the American people want safe, legal access to cannabis. With a single decision, this council will change the game. You here can stand on the side of our forefathers, who universally held cannabis as a cherished cash crop. I urge this council, remove all bans on collectives in the city of LA from any future agendas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to be before you today. I'm Jess Thompson. I'm a TCM physician and a proud resident of District 10. I strongly urge you to take any ban off the, any proposal, ban off the agenda. This is about public safety. We should all have the safe access to medicine that many patients need. Hundreds of thousands of people need safe access in this city. So I please urge you to understand that and vote responsibly. We should all have the freedom for safe access to this medicine. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So we have, we have Adrian, right?
Yes.
Followed by Charles, followed by Eddie Bates.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Adrian Gross, and every day I take a medication that allows me to live a normal life. At the moment, there is no generic equivalent available, and if I didn't have insurance, that would cost $175 a month for just that medication. And as we all know, not everyone is fortunate enough to have access to the medical care that I have. And I think to deny them a natural alternative that they can afford, that they have access to, would be a travesty. And I urge you to not lose sight of the forest for the trees, and not forget that some small technicality in language does not justify taking away life-saving medication for millions of people. And I remind you that it is your duty to serve the people. And as you can see, if there is an opinion to be had, there is someone here to espouse it. And yet, we have not heard one person speak against safe access to affordable medical marijuana. Not one. And all the people that come to speak against all kinds of things, we have not had one person speak against it. So please remember that your duty is for the people, and the people are speaking. And lastly, over this long break, as you consider the fates of these and thousands of other your constituents, I urge you to consider the following quote by the Reverend Martin Niemöller, who speaks regretfully of his inaction during the initial occupation of Germany by the Nazis. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then, they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then, they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Charles, Charles, Eddie Bates, and Heidi. If I remember, Eddie, you may want to start coming up here. Okay, yes, Charles, go ahead.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Charles Curry-Chammer. I'm here to advocate for the safe and affordable access to MMJ in the city of Los Angeles. I understand the reasons as to which you propose a ban on MMJ. My advice to avoid future litigation is to recognize our MMJ rights and table the ban, and to not look for any option to limit safe access in the city of Los Angeles. If you ban MMJ in the city of Los Angeles, you will turn hundreds of thousands of your constituents into common criminals overnight. We need you to understand our inalienable rights as MMJ patients in the state of California. As long as dispensaries fit state guidelines, there is no such thing as a lawful closure of such collective slash cooperative. Past ordinance regarding collectives do not abide by state law, therefore were not put into effect. You are aware of the dispensaries that are permitted to operate in the city. Closing all dispensaries will require immense manpower and resources. Let's put those resources to better use. All I can ask of you is to support those in need, such as the ones that lie before you as transparent, decent individuals that medicate with cannabis.
Participants of Occupy Los Angeles have been fighting political disenfranchisement for nine months, and through these nine months, we have seen the violent hand of the state. We are now relying on this repression to alert all those with the potential to resist against it. The people will not be silenced. The people will expose your corruption, your corruption. The people will win. Anthony Lozano was arrested and thrown back into custody yesterday due to an illegal, targeted arrest. He was not charged or found guilty for any crime, but he is guilty until proven innocent. These are fascist tactics by the state to deter those who are most impassioned about liberty, justice, and equal opportunity from further action. The violent oppression only strengthens our resolve to never stop fighting for our ideas of a just world. The police state and city council have recently created political prisoners. Activists and organizers have been thrown into prison industry before our time. And as long as a prison industrial complex stands to exploit labor from those lost within the system or to silence dissent, there will be no justice in this country. Take a look at the large-scale global resistance around you abroad, to the most powerful ruling elite with the clout to influence our corrupt political apparatus. This year, you should be terrified of those you think have the least amount of power. Expect the most marginalized, the most disempowered, the most disenfranchised to rise up, because soon, they'll have nothing else to lose but their chains. Due to the unlawful detainment of my friend, Coman Anthony, I am taking on a solidarity hunger strike until his release. This hunger strike is in solidarity with all those unlawfully detained, and even those who take desperate measures for survival in this irrational capitalist system. Free the prisoners, FTP, solidarity with the marijuana activists.
Thank you. Following, following Heidi, Cheryl, Eickley, Natalie Hudson, Lucy Caruso.
Hi, I'm Heidi Ure. We keep coming back to see you because we have nowhere else to turn. We hope you'll discuss the information we've been bringing you. You literally hold the keys to our having good, productive lives. There are a lot of drugs out there. Some are very addicting, and all of them have side effects. Cannabis is versatile. It works on so many different ailments, and it's chemical-free. You won't get side effects like that from some I've seen. For us, medical marijuana isn't just the right choice, it's the only choice. We need your help. Please don't ban the dispensaries. And if, I think really calling Canada and finding out how they regulate their dispensaries would be pretty smart. But anyway, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Cheryl, Natalie Hudson, Lucy Caruso, and Heather Meyer.
Good morning. I'm Natalie Hudson. I just want to thank everybody, for all of you listening to us these past few weeks. And I just want to say that I am speaking in opposition to any ban on medical marijuana. This is definitely going to be a public safety issue. When you have 350,000 medical marijuana patients, any type of ban is going to be a public safety issue. I'm a legal studies major, and as a legal studies major, I definitely see any type of ban as a form of double jeopardy. The people already voted on this in 96, and I think you need to aim to perfect the regulations. I think that you have people here that are passionate enough and motivated enough to help us move forward, and maybe we could even be a pioneer city and have other cities look up to us in how we perfected medical marijuana regulations. Los Angeles is a great city, and I think that it wouldn't be like us, and I think it would be extremely irresponsible for you guys to pass the ban. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Cheryl. Cheryl, followed by Lucy Caruso, followed by Heather Meyer, and then Vern Taylor. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Cheryl Eickley, and I live in District 4. I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and today I speak for myself. For the past four years, I've come and spoke about medical cannabis, so I do want to show support to my brothers and sisters now, but I'm actually here to talk about something far more important. I started to talk about it on Friday. I believe that the LAPD are continuing to criminalize peaceful people, whether they're medical cannabis patients or whether they're political protesters. And I was required to take a First Amendment right administered by the city attorney's office if I wanted to avoid prosecution for being arrested on City Hall Law November 30th. And right now, what I see is it's the city that needs the First Amendment right class, not the occupiers, and we'd be happy to give you that class. It may be given to you in a courtroom, or it can be given to you in a much gentler way, but the city is selectively enforcing its graffiti laws in regards to chalk. Your own city parking enforcers use chalk on private property to mark the tires of vehicles that they want to monitor, the time restraints that they're under. So we are—we would rather you use your time and energy fighting Wall Street and the banks, which brought us out here in the first place. Chalking is not a crime. The Ninth District Court of Appeals came to the decision that chalk can do no damage on a sidewalk, therefore it's protected First Amendment, freedom of speech. There's been a UN report that was sent to Secretary of State Hillary Clinton indicating that they believe that local law enforcement and local governments are violating the rights of occupiers. They have not heard back from the federal government yet, but I have a feeling that Occupy L.A. is building a very good case against the city right now, and I would appreciate—
Thank you. Thank you. Are you Heather? Come forward. Lucy, come—get right behind her, followed by Vern Taylor. Go ahead, Ms. Meyer.
Hello, my name is Heather Meyer, and I stand before you today because I really need you to know two things. I know exactly what's going on with the occupiers here in L.A. This is blatant political repression, and secondly, I need you to know, I am not going to tolerate this. This is completely unacceptable, and it has become clear because of punitive detainment, releases without charges, that things such as lawful activities like chalking has become some form of punishment for our LAPD to perpetrate upon peaceful protesters. This truly is intolerable, and I know that I am not the only person who sees it this way, as the whole world is watching. The UN has made it perfectly clear that this is a violation of civil rights, and you really just have not seen the last of me, or I'm sure many more who will follow. You know, and for those of you who claim ignorance, this is your notice. I want to see oversight if this is the case. However, I cannot believe that you are not already well aware of this, with the UN report, with this ruling in 95 that chalk cannot damage a sidewalk, and the recent federal ruling, that this is our First Amendment right that we are entitled to. You know, nearly a dozen arrests in less than a month? Intolerable. You must be held accountable, and I must see oversight, or else I know that, at the very least, you are completely negligent in serving and protecting the rights of the residents of this city.
Thank you. Ms. Caruso, followed by Vern Taylor, followed by Wallace Johnson. I don't see Vern.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
I want to talk about banking. In Y2K, everybody was concerned about computers not working or not processing information right about money. And there was an article in June—I can't recall if it's LA Times or Daily News, unfortunately I didn't cut it out—but it spoke about some banks that were making good investments—well, I don't want to say good or bad. Some investments with certain banks were doing well, some investments where other banks are doing well, had this kind of effect of bouncing, like it was a tilt-a-whirl or something. And do they put something in—the—how does that work up there in the sky? I mean, a tilt-a-whirl, you could see all these planets spinning, so to speak, and with this global warming. Is something getting affected out there? I was just kind of wondering about that. Thank you.
Vern Taylor. Okay, Wallace. Wallace.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, President. I'm here to let you know I took my meds today. I had my smoke today, and I'm holding my food down very well today. But there's a lot, a lot of people out there who can get this access, and regulation is the most important thing we need to do for this.
Take your time, Wallace. Take your time.
Okay. You guys are the backbone of California, period. You guys, L.A. Angelinos. I'm an Angelino, born and raised, and we always fought for something, and everybody else is watching us down at Long Beach. They're watching us, what we do here. Sacramento, they're watching what we do here. So you guys are the big brothers of this state, so whatever decision you guys make, they will follow. Please, we hope you guys make the right decision and let us drop this off the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Sidney G., Tyler A. Is there Linda Romney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Romney, you're—you can—you—in fact, let me get Ms. Romney up here. One second. You put item number one on your card. That's why it wasn't in general public comment.
Oh, thank you. I filled out three cards, one for one, one for two, and one for general comment.
Okay, well, on general comment, I don't have your card, but go ahead.
Thank you, sir. The subject concerning marijuana, as far as I know, is not on the agenda. If it were, you would have a great deal of people in opposition. It has been said that there is no one in opposition. Quite clearly, I am, and I can speak from my own personal experience. In the Mission Hills area, on Devonshire Street, just east of Sepulveda Boulevard, there is a dentist's office. It has a conditional use on it. It was supposed to be for the dentist living upstairs and running his practice. However, since then, there's been 13 units that has been added, including downstairs and marijuana dispensary. Now, what happens is that there is no parking that is provided for these individuals. What they do is they park, encroach into the residential area. And you want to ask what kind of people are visiting these dispensaries? I can tell you from my own personal experience. I have been threatened on more than one occasion, and I'm talking, sir. You had your opportunity.
No, hold, hold, Ms. Romney's time. You guys have been the most polite group. Let's keep it that way. She has the same right to speak that you have. Now we will start your time again.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Romney, go.
So what occurs is that they park in front of the properties, they empty their ashtrays, they change their children, throw the diapers on the parkway, and then on the occasions where you have a bulky item pickup, and you know you put your branches and such on the parkway, and I've asked one of the individuals that was going to the dispensary if they would please park their car just a little bit up so that there wouldn't be any branches or anything touching their vehicle, they refused, and I got threatened. As far as the dentist's office and the individuals that are renting that space, which are 14 units, they complained because the marijuana goes upstairs as everything rises and is intoxicating the patients. They're losing business.
Thank you. Thank you. I gave her a few more seconds because of the semi-disturbance. So are you Tyler? Sidney? And then a Tyler, and then Dow House dude. Go on, Sidney.
All right. Good morning, council members. Today, I'm here as a representative of myself and hundreds of thousands of your constituents. We want to remind you, as your constituency, that we need safe access to medical marijuana. We don't want to be considered criminals for choosing alternative medicine. We don't want to be forced back to pharmaceutical drugs. As our elected officials, we would like you to represent our voice in our 1996 vote in favor of Prop 215 and Senate Bill 420. The need for medical marijuana hasn't decreased. If anything, it's increased. As you go on summer break, please find some time to research the benefits of medical marijuana, and when you come back from break, please remove any ban from the agenda or oppose any ban that does make it on the agenda. Thank you for all your time and attention over the last few weeks, almost months. Enjoy your summer break. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler A., followed by Dow House dude, followed by Mr. Herman, and if there's a Vern Taylor here, come forward. Tyler A.
Yeah, hello. I'd like to thank you for listening to me, and I just want to say that the ban on the medical marijuana, I feel, is really absurd. Honestly, we're a peaceful people. There's nothing—as far as she's saying, she's talking about a particular incident, that just shows to me that we need your support. We need you to work with us and not against us, because we are the people, and you're supposed—and we do have the power, you know, but we appointed y'all to work with us, so we need y'all help, and honestly, I feel there's a lot of other—a lot of other issues we can work, and that a lot of other issues that are way more important than this, and that we can use our energy on that end. And there are a lot of patients that really need this medicine, and this is far past an American right, it's a human right now, and it's freedom, so we're going to do it. And where there's light, there's hope, and power to the patients.
Okay, Tyler. Dow House dude, followed by Mr. Herman, and that will end general public comment.
All right. General public comment. Does anybody want to buy a watch? Anyway, you know, the people are telling you what they want. What's wrong with you? You are supposed to be a democracy. That means ruled by the people, not by a bunch of little—oh, never mind, can't call you those names—in public. See, I can't let my pants down because I got shorts, right? It's not a wardrobe malfunction like on TV, like Jackson's sister, right? I know all that stuff. I act stupid, I act crazy to let you know how stupid and crazy this whole thing is. You should ban alcohol, if anything. It's the worst drug ever. I do not uphold marijuana either, because I don't need it. I don't want it, but some people might need it or might want it, and some people may even need alcohol to gargle away their cold. It could be medicine, too. So why don't you ban all your expensive expense accounts? Why don't you do that? Why don't you donate to a cause so everyone in the world can have a home instead of taxing them out of their houses? Krikorian, help Dodger Dave. Don't just tell him to pay the bill.
No, direct all your comments to the entire council.
Help Dodger Dave to pay his bill, and Dodger Dave helped him for five days straight in his campaign. Don't the people have any lobbying rights? The bill was a funny bill from seven years ago, and they would have taken his house for $1,600.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman.
A proposed ordinance to establish new definitions. In my hand, a month ago, I spoke about the lack of responsibility with the city of Los Angeles and to enforce an ordinance for over the last five years. Now in my hand, I have this ordinance, and it still needs to be rebuffed. But for the purpose of what? It lacks cost, it has no responsibility, and the most important feature of this ordinance, there is no maintenance feature. So who's to take up the cost for damages? You, the taxpayer, taxpayers, and we, the taxpayers, and it's insulting and degrading at a time when the city misuses your funds. David Salzberg for mayor, you got my vote, and I hope the rest of you remember this name, zoomadog.com, David Salzberg for mayor. Why? Because it's David Salzberg who brings up real issues about misuse, lost funds, and accountability. So, Mr. Salzberg, we're looking forward to hear you back here at City Hall to bring up these issues, real-life issues, and I hope you can step up the game as a mayor, because if you want my vote, which you already have, do it, Mr. Salzberg, because for the number of years at City Hall, you have proven that there is accountability, and you can make accountability by bringing the appropriate attention to real issues. And so back on this ordinance, is there a maintenance feature for the cost? And why should the city make a fund open to the DCA, the Department of Cultural Affairs? Why should they receive the permit funds? No, it should go back to the general funds of the city so it can be used for street maintenance, infrastructure repairs, and more so to stop the high taxation.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask that item number nine be reconsidered. That should actually be received and filed.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Members, we're going to vote on the reconsideration of item nine. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
And is that reconsidered without objection, Mr. President?
Without objection. Okay, now I want to go to item 53 real quick. Mr. Walsh had a card on 53. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Thank you. I had an illusion earlier in the meeting that you morphed into Eric Garcetti. It was the most terrifying moment I've ever had at City Council. Thank God, you're back. Oh, God. I've never hallucinated like that. I don't like LSD.
Mr. President, he has not talked about this item yet.
HollywoodHighlands.org Communications. This concerns the downtown industrial district BID. As we've said before, we are 100% in favor of BIDs because they have helped us to keep Hollywood clean of hate groups, and as you know, Hollywood is now the number-one hate group center in California. HollywoodHighlands.org, thank you. It's so nice to see you up there.
Okay, thank you. On that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's go to item one.
Item one, call special for cars.
Oh, Mr. Walsh, come on back. We're on item one. I should have told you when you were up there. Followed by you, Ms. Pearman, followed by Mr. Herman. Call three names. I want to see three people, two behind Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, this is a serious issue. We had a killing at the zoo. We had one monkey murder, a baby monkey. It's a bad omen. You have been raising the prices for the past five years, the admission fee at the zoo, five years in a row. In 2005, it was $10 to come in here. Now, to go to the zoo, now it will be $17 to go to the zoo. You know, when I was a kid at the zoo lodge, in the Bronx Zoo, it was 10 cents, 10 cents and 15 cents for adults. What I'm saying here is, this has been rushed through, it didn't go to committee, it's plopped up here on number one, and your answer to everything is raise the prices, and who is this going to harm? And who is this going to harm? Is it going to harm tourists? No. Because it's actually lower than the San Diego Zoo. What this is going to mean is that kids will not be able to go to the zoo. Now, you're claiming, parents won't be able to afford it. You're claiming that it will end up after a year with a $780,000 increase in revenue. But that's based on the fact, on your belief, the false belief, that people are gonna, that member, that, uh, membership will continue, that revenue will come in because the number of people going to the zoo will not fall. In fact, the number of people going to the zoo will fall, and you'll end up revenue neutral, and you'll end up, I mean, do something right for a change. And vote no on raising the fares to the zoo, because within another five or six years, you're gonna have to take out a student loan to go to the zoo. That's how expensive it's gonna be. And let's get exercise to zoo, too. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Donna Pearman, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Linda Romney.
I myself thought it was a dream to see Eric Garcetti up there in presidency. Anyway, uh, I should really, I'm really tired because I should be in Van Nuys City Hall. But I want to know how, now I found out how much it's gonna be cost for go to zoo. And it's already hard enough for the low to middle-class families to afford, to have everybody go, the family go to the zoo. You want to encourage people to see our LA Zoo, not just San Diego. Well, you'll discourage families from going to the zoo. And I still think you'll also discourage, uh, tourists from going to the zoo, because why would they want to spend $17 to see our little LA Zoo? So, and I don't believe it's gonna go help the animals. I think it's gonna go administration. I think you're gonna waste money. My legs are tired. Uh, just like what you're doing, wasting the money over here and not letting us have the Van Nuys, um, video conferencing, that this money is just gonna go over the zoo. We'll probably just throw it away to the administration, and you're not gonna be helping it for the animals. I don't see any transparency that you're going to be spending it the correct way, and people won't know, not know why they're spending $17 an hour and probably won't see any differences for the zoo at all. So I think you should vote no on this.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, followed by Linda Romney.
Members of council, your action to tax $1, an increase of, for zoo fees, is ridiculous. Knowing that this economy has not improved, it has not shown growth, and your ideas of business was not to tax the taxpayers. I don't see Arlacon raising the prices of taxes in his poverty area of communities in the Pacoima areas, the Van Nuys areas. But yet, residents in Los Angeles, we in particular, in East Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, communities that are low income, living on low means, like Jan Perry's district out here in the City of Los Angeles, shame on you, shame on you. How dare you sit here and say we're not gonna raise taxes, when you have? And you are. You have to. I spoke about this a long time ago. And now, the irony is this. People will show less interest as you continue to raise prices to public events, to areas of no interest when it comes to the dollar that we work so hard for. Let's have nonprofits and donors promote this $1 issue. Isn't that how we put together zoos? Isn't that how we get our contributions? We need to take priorities of importance when it comes to taxation. And so, David Salzberg, once again, I call out to you for mayor.
Let's stay on the subject, Mr. Herman.
You brought out important issues in your six years about a bad economy, a city that is in turmoil, a city that has damaged the budget now.
Thank you. Ms. Romney? Would appear that she left. So on this item, Madam Clerk, we're gonna prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, I believe the next item is item 18. Mr. Englander, are you ready?
Colleagues, uh, we've been working on this for quite some time. Working with Eric Garcetti in collaboration with the mayor's office and many others, we started looking at the issues of sales tax and revenues in the City of Los Angeles and ways to increase and enhance that. Some of the money that we've lost over the past as well, and looking at the industries that are most affected and impacted. And looking at that, we analyzed several different industries and came up with the idea, uh, and it really, it was standing right in front of us, that we've been driving away new car dealers out of the City of Los Angeles for many years. New car dealers in the City of Los Angeles, right now, we, we estimate we have around 52 left in the city. 52 car dealers that generate roughly $32 million in sales tax to the city. That's about $615,000 on average for each dealer. In 1986, we had 147 dealers. And on average, if that was $615,000 back then, and keep in mind, in 2011, that was the worst, one of the worst years for car dealers, and they still generated 32 million. In 1986, at 147 dealers, that would be $90 million. So that would be a $60 million loss every single year, because we've driven them out of our city. And not only have we driven them out of our city, and we need to steer them back here to Los Angeles, they've moved to local cities, adjacent cities, like Calabasas and Cerritos. Cerritos is a great example, because that city actually offers their car dealers free land in some instances to share the sales tax revenue. So they've been stealing away businesses that generate money that would go back to our general fund. So I ask you to support this, so we can try to bring new business back to LA. It's the business taxes, when we found out, meeting with the car dealers and the New Car Dealers Association, that was driving them out. They didn't want to pay business taxes because other cities don't charge them those business taxes. So we're getting back in return roughly $4 million in business taxes, a little less than that, but we're giving up 60 million. That makes no sense. With that, I would ask that you support this. One of the questions, um, there's been several questions, actually, that we need more studies, we need more delays, we need more bureaucratic red tape, we need more financial information coming back. I think we vetted this pretty well. We know that this makes sense. We know that these car dealers have been moving out of the city, and we know what the numbers are that they generate. Now, having said that, a lot of people said, well, the local tax that's generated, when you go buy a car, that tax comes back to the city where you live. That's not true. Uh, in fact, I'd like to ask Ray Serrano, our CAO, up to the table to explain that very issue, if we could, because that seems to be the hook that some folks are saying, well, we shouldn't do this because it doesn't matter where they're located. And on local share, if you could explain how that concept works for new cars and who gets the money?
Certainly.
That would be great.
Please. Ray Serrano, CAO's office. I know there's been some uncertainty as far as the collection, um, of those sales tax and actually what entity will receive that. Um, it's, it's been questionable. Say, for example, that you buy a car out in Pomona, but you live in the city, that Pomona, um, would, would not get the tax, and actually you within the city, because that's where your residents with the tax. Unfortunately, that is not true. It is, um, the tax is collected at the point of sale. So if you buy a car in Pomona, though you live in the city, that sales tax is gonna be, uh, collected and received by Pomona. So there certainly is an incentive for the city to actually bring in more car dealerships. Like you had mentioned, I think we have about 52 back, you know, good 25 years ago, we had over 100 of them. And so we have certainly, as these dealerships have migrated to Glendale, uh, other parts of the county, we certainly have lost the ability to, to generate that extra sales tax revenue because of that.
Great. Thank you very much. I also have a amended ordinance, 18A, with a date change. So we'd ask for you to support it with the amendment as well. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti. And there's Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosenthal, Ms. Perry, Ms., and we'll continue. We've got also some public speakers, so we can take that after the council members. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Englander, for co-introducing this with me, and thank you for your leadership on, on pushing this forward. And I want to thank as well, um, the Greater Los Angeles New Car Dealers, New Car Dealers Association for their key work on this as well. Um, you know, for too long, surrounding cities have used LA's broken tax system to lure businesses away. And I think today, we are here to say that stops now. Los Angeles is gonna compete for jobs, and Los Angeles, we're going to win. We're gonna win when we realize that our broken system, which literally takes businesses just over our city borders to sell to our residents, is not working for anybody. In calling for the elimination of a tax scheme that charges car dealerships even when they lose money, our city's gross receipts tax, I think this is the seventh piece of, of legislation I've been able to introduce and work on to either reduce or eliminate different forms of this tax. And as many of you know, I hope one day to get rid of it altogether. Mr. Englander showed how many are left. According to our research, 95 car dealerships have left over the last 20 years. So while there are 52 that are still here, 95 have picked up and left our borders. That's millions of dollars we could have used to fill potholes. It's millions of dollars we could have used to staff fire stations. It's thousands of LA jobs for salespersons, for mechanics, car washers, and more. But as we look at this today, and we look at an unemployment rate which is 50% higher than the rest of the nation, I think that we have to have a sense of urgency about this. And for those who are worried about any budget aspects of this, let me lay out the math for you. Because it is quite clear that this is, not only makes sense for business, it makes sense for our bottom line. This year, we expect an uptick in, um, car sales, uh, that will bring us about $5.4 million more in sales tax. The elimination will get rid of about $4.68 million in gross receipts tax. So we should net about $720,000 higher in our receipts this year from car dealerships. But even if we had had a flat year, we would have only had to get five car dealerships back in the city for the sales tax generated in those five dealerships to cover the gross receipts tax for all of the remaining dealerships that are here. Think about that. And we already have two that we've lured back in the last year. So three to go, and not only is this revenue neutral, that's on top of the increase that we've seen in car sales this year. It's time for us to send a message. It's time for us to get serious about business. It's time for us to stop keeping this tax that chases our jobs and our revenues across our city borders. I urge you to join the committee report today and to pass this today. Let's get back to business, and let's put people back to work in the City of LA.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Ms. Perry.
Susan, Mr. President, is there a second to Mr. Englander's motion to adopt the...
Seconded by Mr. Garcetti.
And just for the record, substitute ordinance 18A has been circulated.
Very well. Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal.
Very much, uh, Mr. President. Uh, good morning. We had asked a series of questions way back when we were first discussing it. Obviously, I have to think of Bert Bachmann, who's an old friend of mine. We go back 30 years. I've always bought my car at Galpin Ford, okay? And I understand buying in the city is absolutely critical. I also have in my district, a little strip of Culver City that's full of, uh, auto dealerships. Then I got the little town of Santa Monica in the heart of my district that practically has a dealership on every corner. And then, of course, as my colleagues have pointed out, we've seen them leave the great city of Los Angeles. So obviously, we want to do whatever we can to incent them, or whatever we can to get them back, because the sales tax is a big check on an automobile, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So with this present moment, um, we will lose 3.6 million to the general fund. Is that true?
As we look forward to 1213, the estimate is probably about 3.6 or 3.8 in the business tax category.
Uh-huh. And what about in another category?
And certainly, as we look at sales tax, sales tax is actually up. We finished 1112 up, and certainly, as we go forward, that that number will increase likewise, and that will cover more than offset.
And that likewise would be how much, do you figure?
Uh, I, I would say we're, we're up about 3 million in 1112, and it certainly is gonna grow higher than that. So it, it should offset roughly about 1 to 1.
So explain what you mean by offset.
Meaning, we will have more sales tax revenue as projected for next year in the range of 3.6, 3.8, that will offset the, the business tax estimate of 3.6 or 3.8.
So what that basically says, it will cancel it out?
Cancels out, yes.
Okay. It will cancel out that 3.6 million. And then the hope is, uh, dealerships will see the value of coming into our city?
That is correct. Certainly, uh, as mentioned previously, there's two new dealerships that are in, um, looking at exploring and coming to LA. I have heard that there are a few others as well. Uh, if we get to that five new dealerships, we will be in a positive.
So the bottom line is, this could incent our bottom line for our general treasury by being, what we like to use the phrase, more business friendly?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, follow, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. And, uh, I just want to highlight for our friends in the automotive dealership industry that, um, the bright spot is the Figaroa Corridor, as you already know. And, uh, while that's still part of the Ninth District, I invite you to come right away. I'm here, you can talk to me now. And let's get going and take, take advantage of this opportunity that we've been given to grow your presence on Figaroa, starting at Washington Boulevard and heading south.
Mr. Busta Yino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, um, thank you, thank you, thank you to Mr. Englander, Mr. Garcetti, uh, for championing this, this effort here. As we all know, colleagues, the city's not business friendly. And how I know that is because in my district, in CD 15, we are surrounded by Long Beach, Carson, Torrance, Rancho Palos Verdes, where we're losing businesses by, businesses clearly crossing over to west of Western, uh, so they don't have to pay the gross receipts tax. We've seen car dealerships go to the, the west of us in Torrance. And, uh, moving forward in eliminating this, uh, gross receipts tax for new car dealerships, I'm calling on anyone, any new car dealership who wants to come and invest in my district, letting them know, we have space for you. Come down to Harbor City on PCH. Come down to Harbor Gateway on Vermont. We need you, we want you. And I'm just frustrated at times when clearly, uh, a business can walk across the street. I, I, I've seen it done. So I think this is a right effort, a right move, Mr. Garcetti. I too want to, uh, phase out our gross receipts tax, because, you know, our budget issue is not more of, uh, it's more of a revenue issue. And I think with the complete phasing out of the gross receipts tax, we will bring business to the City of Los Angeles and ultimately help with our revenue. So congratulations to my colleagues, Mr. Englander, Mr. Garcetti, moving forward to this. And again, uh, a call out to Galpin Motors. You want to, you want to have, you want to move into the, the city in my district, come down to Harbor City. I'll show you some spots that you can come down and, and, uh, and move in and have a new car dealership in my district. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Ray, I'd just like you to go over a couple of numbers you gave us earlier. You said that we could lose, uh, 3.8 million? And you said that on the rate of return on sales tax, it could go up, we estimate 3 million?
Certainly, the, the current year, or I should say, I keep saying the current year, actually 1112, we are higher than budget estimate, and projecting going forward in 1213, we're gonna be higher, um, even further.
But that 3 million you're estimating is not coming from the auto industry, is coming from general sales tax?
It's, it's, yes, all of the category, all the general sales tax.
Okay. And so we would not expect necessarily more sales tax from the auto industry until more dealerships come in the city?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is, is that, and I think if the CA, if the city attorney said, I'm, I'm just concerned as to the state law, when we talk about not providing incentives, and when we look at the issue of the state law, and it says you can't provide incentives, yet almost every comment that was made today is talking about going and getting the dealers that have left. And yet, we're, we have the proposal to reduce the taxes, business taxes on new auto sales. We also have a, uh, a business tax holiday in place that would benefit new businesses. And then even in your letter, that cover letter for the ordinance, you say, it's not without problems, and you're recommending a sunset date, so that if we lose it, you have less to pay. And that's not very comforting to me. have less to pay. And that's not very comforting to me, that we feel that certain that we bypass. And if anybody collects this tape today, I don't know how you'd get out of the incentive discussion.
Deputy City Attorney Dan Whitley, I can address those concerns. The way we drafted this ordinance does not provide, in our opinion, an incentive to new car dealers. The way we drafted the ordinance does not provide an incentive to new car dealers to come into the city of Los Angeles within the meaning of the state statute. What the ordinance does is provide tax treatment for all retail sales of new cars within the city of Los Angeles, whether they are coming to the city or already existing in the city. So this is no different than any other change the city would be making to any other business classification. So this ordinance is not going to fall within the state statute that prohibits the city from providing incentives to car dealers that are relocating from outside the city to within the city. We're very comfortable with that, with that opinion, and we feel we can defend it in court. But there is no precedent for us to rely on. So we do want to make sure council is aware that this is uncharted waters. We believe we would win if challenged, but there is some doubt.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm concerned with. Your letter is not nearly as positive as your statements. And I think if somebody, and I think I'll ask Ray, have we looked at what is stated in the letter from the city attorney, that if someone sues us, and then they also achieve the lowest rate, how much that would impact us?
We have not looked at that. We have to take a look at that.
Because one of the things, I think when this was in committee, I was under the impression that this wouldn't come to council until the CAO had an objective analysis that gave us all that kind of input. But we have it today without that analysis, and that's another concern. Is that report forthcoming, or we're not going to get it, or is it a summer study?
Well, we're halfway through summer. We would, upon request, we'd be happy to go ahead and do a written report and look at all of the pieces. I think in absent today that we don't have a report in front of you, we were comfortable with the proposal as presented.
Let me ask you, when will this ordinance become effective?
If it's enacted today?
If it's enacted today, it would still have to be published after publication.
Okay. What is the timeline?
Most ordinances are effective 31 days after publication.
Okay. Could we have a motion to ask the CAO's report to be done before we get that ordinance, before it becomes effective?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. $3.8 million. We're not including, when a dealer opens up in Los Angeles, what we generate from the service of the vehicles or the parts that are sold. So there's additional revenue that we would collect in addition to the sale of the vehicle. And I want to say that I bought a Jeep at David Ellis, Roscoe, and there we're looking to relocate, hopefully continuing in the San Fernando Valley. Daryl Holter, the Cadillac Porsche man, who Figueroa, you did a lot to address Figueroa. Keys, that has spent millions upon millions of dollars to renovate Van Nuys Boulevard with the dealerships that they have. And I had a conversation with Mr. Bachmann recently, and he reminded me, he said, I still own that property that I bought adjacent to the 5 freeway in Burbank, where at one time, he was considering moving his operation, the world's largest Ford dealer. So when you look at the enterprise zones we've established around the city, some in my district, to try and bring business in, when we look at Bob Smith, who had a BMW dealership on Topanga, who's now in Calabasas, where you do not have a gross receipts tax, and where we have, the city of Los Angeles purchases cars, and sometimes they don't purchase from city operations, which we should, from dealers that are established here in the city of Los Angeles, the ones that remain. I don't think there should be a long debate about trying to incentivize so they would encourage more dealers to open up in Los Angeles, more taxes to generate in Los Angeles, and more service in the city of Los Angeles. And when we look at the numbers, how they've dropped, we're still a car culture. And while we want the orange line to be successful, and the gold line, and the blue line, and the different lines that we have for public transit, people still like to have a car in this region. And when we have that idea, we need to bring those folks back. So whatever we can do to encourage them to come back, and if this helps retain those that are already here, because oftentimes, we think about bringing somebody else in, but what about the ones that are here? And they've struggled for a while. Now, the business is good. It's turned around. But there was a while that the car dealers were struggling, severely struggling. And thank goodness, that has turned around. So I think this is an absolute positive for the dealers. It's an absolute positive. It's a flag to wave for those surrounding this region to come to Los Angeles. I've got places in my district on Topanga where, since Bob Smith left, that's still considered, that's still vacant. Reseda Boulevard near the Wash, that is vacant. A dealership closed up there. And if I think you look around the city, you'll find dealers that have closed, and no one has gone in those locations. So this incentive, hopefully, will bring them back, and at the same time, take care of those that are still here in the city of Los Angeles. So we have to give and take. And in the end, not only the car tax, but the jobs that we will employ, the reconstruction that'll take place, all in all, it's a win. And I would just say, for the Department of Finance Treasury, that we have an obligation to collect the dollars. Do we find any problem with those that are existing paying their fees to the city of Los Angeles? In other words, are they reputable folks that pay what they owe the city of Los Angeles? Do we have to go chase them down like the parking lot owners that try to steal the money?
The Office of Finance can't speak to any individual taxpayers, but we have not seen an issue in this particular industry in terms of payment and remittance of the tax.
So we could honestly say that they're honorable business folks that are here in the city of Los Angeles paying what they're required to pay?
We can say that the tax is being paid correctly.
Okay. Well, that's a much more positive than some of the businesses that we have to deal with. So I think that, and could congratulate my colleagues for bringing this forward. Which, Richard, you thought that was funny? For people to be honest and pay their fees and taxes?
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council members, as one who presented the business tax holiday motion on behalf of the mayor, and who also introduced the motion to eliminate the business tax over a period of years, I can't stand up and say, I'm going to oppose this, so I won't. But I think we need to have a good understanding of how we're doing this. As we eliminate business taxes, we need to be clear, we have to set the standards for how we do those eliminations. We shouldn't just do it willy-nilly across the board. We should identify those industries that are likely to generate the revenue. We should also identify those businesses that are friendly to what is going on in Los Angeles. And I think that we should also look at the particular opportunity that presents itself. One thing that hasn't been mentioned here, and I don't know if it's known, but many of the car dealerships that were developed outside of the city of Los Angeles benefited from community redevelopment processes. In other words, those other jurisdictions used the community redevelopment vehicle to create tax increment to build those new car dealerships outside of Los Angeles. And now that the state has eliminated community redevelopment as a process, eliminating our business tax is particularly noteworthy in terms of its impact and incentive value for the city of Los Angeles. In other words, had we done it last year, when there was a CRA, it might not have had the same effect as it does this year. Moving forward, though, or I should say, if we look at our history, we have lost a whole bunch of these businesses. And in fact, we are less than half of what we were 20 years ago in this industry. And that has severely impacted our revenue stream and caused people to go outside of the city of Los Angeles. And as Dennis Zine mentioned, it's not just about the sales of cars, it's about where you take your car to get repaired after you buy it, and all the revenue that's generated in those processes. And we just barely touched on the whole issue of the construction costs and the value of generating jobs in our neighborhood when we construct these businesses. So I do want to correct Mr. Buscagno. Galpin Ford is in Tony Carlin's district and my district, and we're not looking to send him to San Pedro unless he wants to open up another dealership, and he certainly can do that. But notwithstanding that, I think that we should not be looking at tax reductions in and of themselves. You have to look holistically at the process. And I believe that this reduction meets the standard. I believe over time, it will generate more revenue for the city of Los Angeles, create more jobs, and provide more opportunity for communities throughout Los Angeles. And so with that, I support the motion. The business tax holiday, Mr. Parks, is a temporary measure. It only lasts for three years on those new businesses. But more importantly, I think, by taking this action, we will stop businesses from leaving Los Angeles. And that's the most critical value of this motion. So I do support it, and I commend Mr. Englander for pressing this forward.
Thank you. Before I call on Mr. Coretts, I want to call on the city attorney for a clarification of sorts.
Thank you, Mr. President. In response to Mr. Parks's inquiry, the ordinance will be effective 31 days after publication. However, the operative date, as written into this amendment, will not be until January 1, 2013.
Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to join in thanking Mr. Englander, Mr. Garcetti, for their work on this issue. I think it's one of Mr. Rosendahl's proverbial no brainers. There's very little doubt that this will net more revenue for the city.
You have to say, great, 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 Mr. Coretts.
I'll leave it to Mr. Rosendahl to do that. I think, I also agree with Mr. Alarcon. It's important, rather than, especially in the financial situation that we're in, rather than just wiping out the business tax, that we have to do it in a targeted way and go first and deal with the industries where it's most advantageous for us. I think this one is pretty clear. The one question I have is, are we just planning on taking this action and hoping that the word gets out and some people join us? Or do we actually have any entity or person within the city family that is actually going to aggressively market this change and go to people that have left, and go to dealers that could come into the city and actually do outreach and marketing? Because if we don't do that, we'll have some success anyway, but we won't nearly have the kind of success that we should. Not relating to tax breaks, but at one point, about 20 years ago, the city of West Hollywood decided we were going to market to entertainment and try to pick up retail and wholesale and headquarters in the entertainment industry. And we did the outreach, and that's the heart of West Hollywood. They were very successful, and they marketed to what they wanted, and they brought it into the city. With this tax break, we can do that. But I want to know, is that in the offing? Have we planned that far? And if not, should we be thinking about that? I don't know who on staff or...
Ray, you want to respond?
Whether anybody's given any thought to this thus far.
I have more. The rest, I push my phone away.
Okay. Anyone on staff have anything to add? Otherwise, I'll just wait for Mr. Englander's comments.
Go ahead and answer, yeah.
Mr. Englander, do you, is this the last question or only question you need to know, Mr. Coretts?
I'm done. I just want to raise that.
Okay. So what I'm going to do, if it's okay with Mr. Krikorian, I'm going to jump Englander over Krikorian, so that in your clothes, you can answer that question and do whatever else it is you want to do.
I was going to sing and dance, but I'll just go ahead.
Other than that?
I'll close then. I'll close then. I think Joe's the only one that can do that. Mr. Garcetti.
You know, there is some, on the internet, work of several city council dancers that are phenomenal dancers. But anyway, go on, Mr.
I'll leave the phenomenal part.
Especially Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Alarcon.
Beauties in the eye of the beholder. With that, the, let me address the business tax holiday for a moment. That's been brought up time and time again, that we've just extended the business tax holiday again. And so we can attract new dealers. What that does cause is an unfair competitive advantage to the existing dealers, number one. But number two is, we went around and asked a lot of the dealers that had left why they left. And they said it was, they were getting ready, their lease was either up on the property. And oftentimes, I think it's almost every 10 years or so, a dealer will completely rebuild their dealership. They need to refresh it. It gets tired. They want to attract the customers. And so they put millions of dollars into restoring and rebuilding, refreshing their dealership. And so if they stay here, they have to make that decision every time that lease comes up. Do they want to stay here? What's the cost of staying here? What's the cost of operation? And they have to take the totality of all those costs into consideration. And the one thing that comes up each and every time is the business tax. And the fact that they're not having that business tax in other cities, and so they leave. In fact, as Mr. Garcetti pointed out, 90 have left the city. They have fled. They keep driving away. And so bringing them back here, that business tax unfortunately is not enough on a temporary basis in terms of the business tax holiday. We have to at least keep the ones we've got here and honor the ones we have here, and allow them to expand and rebuild, and put the dollars that they're going to save back into their practice and their dealers. On the outreach part that Mr. Coretts had asked, we have done significant outreach. In fact, we have a letter pending signature right now in my office, ready to go out to the existing dealers, as well as ones that have fled the city, as well as other ones that we'd like to attract here, letting them know exactly what we've done, what we're doing. We've also gone out and worked with, Mr. Garcetti and I went out to Beverly Hills Porsche, in fact, where we, when we introduced the motion, we actually signed the motion on a Porsche, on a brand-new Porsche, in Beverly Hills, and said, we're going to introduce this because we want you to come to Los Angeles. They are, they're ready to open up a dealership here in Los Angeles. So I ask for your support in this. And as Mr. Alarcon had stated, and I'd like to bring that point home, and the important thing is, we all support eliminating or reducing business taxes. But where it makes sense is to look at industries that are going to directly benefit and increase revenue back to the general fund immediately, and jobs, and ancillary businesses, and all of those extra, and unrelated, not just directly related, benefits to the city. And this is that one category and that one industry that makes a lot of sense. So I ask for your i-vote. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate the points that both Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Englander made regarding the general reduction in the business tax. Certainly something that we need to continue to make progress toward, but we need to do it in a smart and targeted way. We can't simply write off $400 million of revenues on the hopes that new revenues will come in from new sales tax. But I think when it comes to new car dealerships, it should be obvious to all that these are the sorts of businesses that are exactly the type that we should be targeting for the improvement that we'll get in sales tax revenues. First of all, every time that a resident of the valley goes to Brand Boulevard to buy a car instead of Van Nuys Boulevard, and they spend $30,000 on a Toyota or a Chevy, it's like writing a $300 check to the city of Glendale to pay for cops and ambulances and street services in that city instead of our city. And so the magnitude of that cumulative sales tax from each dealership is so significant. And these are not community-serving businesses. This is not a grocery store that services the area, the consumers in the area. People drive to car dealerships. So the residents of the valley can go anywhere to go buy a car, and they do. So there's no reason that a car dealership needs to stay in the San Fernando Valley to service San Fernando Valley residents. It's a, excuse the pun, but it's a mobile industry. And they can locate anywhere. So this is exactly the kind of business that we need to be targeting for business tax elimination, because there's no question in my mind that the sales tax generated over the long haul will more than make up for this, especially when you add in, as Mr. Zine indicated, all the other things. The mayor and I just a couple of weeks ago visited Keys European on Van Nuys Boulevard. Keys Automotive has made a $35 million investment in Van Nuys, in that facility. $35 million in that beautiful new infrastructure in one car dealership that they've opened up. And there's more to come. But when somebody is making that kind of an investment in infrastructure, they're really not looking at the business tax holiday. They're really not looking about whether they can save the business tax for the next two or three years, when they can go to Glendale and save it forever. If we don't eliminate this tax for this industry right now, we are going to lose this industry, because there's absolutely no compelling reason that they need to stay here. And that sales tax revenue is going to be gone. So members, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Englander, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's a step in the right direction. Let's move forward on this now. I respectfully ask for your i-vote.
Mr. Garcetti, so did Englander buy a Porsche?
No, he did not. But you've seen his car. It's pretty tricked out. We...
The only car bought in the city of LA.
Yes, bought in the city of LA. Thank you, Mr. Englander, for doing that. Colleagues, I know there's been a lot of talk about what our overall strategy is. And yes, we do have, I think, it'll be coming to us soon, an intelligent plan to move forward. yes, we do have, I think, it'll be coming to us soon, an intelligent plan to move forward with elimination of the business tax, starting with key industries like this one. So that's a preview of coming attractions, and I think you'll be similarly receptive. I did want to just ask, if we can, to have our representative come forward, because there was one thing that was stated on the record, I just want to make sure that it stays the right way. David Ellis, if you wouldn't mind coming forward to the podium. The sales tax, Mr. Parks asked about the sales tax, the CIO, the 5.4 million that is estimated, if we could maybe, or Mr. Gagan, either one of you want to establish on the record, these are calculations made by the dealers about what the increase is going to be just on sales tax for the car dealers themselves, not our overall sales tax increase. Because I wouldn't want people to say, "Oh, well, we're increasing our overall sales tax just about the same amount," and it'll be washed just with that. We estimate, because the increase of car sales, or they do, but I just wanted to establish where this number came from, that literally 2012 sales tax increase off of cars alone in the city of L.A. will, I think, be 5.4 million. Is that correct?
Mr. Ellis, come forward.
Hi, I'm David Ellis. I'm a dealer in Canoga Park since 1980, and my family's been in the business since. My father's actually sold cars.
Which dealership? Why don't you just say, as long as you have the microphone?
David Ellis Chrysler Jeep.
Excellent.
And I'm the president of the Greater Los Angeles Dealers Association. And it says here, "Under the proposed ordinance, new car dealers would still pay the gross receipt tax for their wholesale parts and service activities, which account for approximately 25% of their business." So it's not, it's not a blanket deal where we don't pay the gross receipt tax. And Mr. Zein made an excellent point. As car dealers, we build relationships with customers, and it all starts with the sale of the new car. And if someone goes in Canoga Park and they leave and go to Thousand Oaks and buy a car, I not only lose that new car sale, now I'm going to lose service. Most of us own body shops, service business, and now I can't expand my business. I'm losing business. I could be hiring mechanics. And there's so much more to it than just the sale of the new car. It's a relationship that's built. So...
And just on the sales tax, what were the estimates that your group had in terms of what the, new car sales have increased, about 17% through the first five months of this year compared to last year? If that were to hold, how much more would be generated this year from sales tax?
It's the estimated increase in sales tax, we see the adjusted target by $1.1 million.
So we would see a reduction of 4.6 in gross receipts?
Correct.
But we would have 5.7 in additional sales tax?
We net out 1.1 million.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to put that on the record. Colleagues, I urge your support. Thank you to the industry. Thank you to members for their diligence on this. Thank you, Mr. Englander, and let's take this car off the lot.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one additional factual point to follow up on that. Under the terms of this ordinance, the business, the gross receipts tax continues also to be paid on used cars. So it's only the new cars that are exempt from gross receipts. So we still have all the sales tax and gross receipts on used cars. So to me, it's a modest step in what we are giving up in terms of gross receipts for the very significant sales tax revenues that will certainly come from both of those sources.
Thank you for that, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Englander, we've already satisfied the request for public comment on this. So what we're going to do is we're just going to vote on the issue. You're not, anyway, I'm not going to respond anyway on that. Mr. Zein.
Mr. President, it's 12:20, and some of these dealers have been here since before 10 o'clock as a courtesy. If we could give each one, if they wish, each one a minute to make a comment, because we've got some dedicated dealers that are here this morning.
Mr. Zein, as a courtesy, we will, we will do that. But you have to realize that each one of those dealers are salespeople, okay? Salespeople know when they think they've made the sale...
I just want to make sure we show respect for them.
When they think you've made the sale...
Respect for the dealers.
They do this. They hand you a pen. So with that said...
Where's my pen for Mr. Ellis for the Jeep I bought, Mr. Ellis?
This has met the public hearing requirement. So, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Mr. Rosendahl, item 75.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm asking for unanimous support. On Tuesday, January 3rd, 2012, David E. Morales was shot and killed in West Los Angeles. David was walking northbound on Sotel Boulevard to Pearl Street with a friend when they were approached and shot at about 7:30 p.m. David was only 18 years old and is survived by his mother Marnie and stepfather. David was a lifelong resident of West L.A. He had just graduated from the University High School in 2011 and attended the Nora Sterling Elementary and the Emerson Middle School. David was also an LAPD police cadet. Investigators described the assailants as Latinos between the ages of 16 and 20. Detectives are seeking the public's help in solving this case. Anyone with information regarding this senseless crime is urged to call lead investigators, David Vinton or Detective Rolando Rodriguez Jr. at 213-382-9472, or 213-382-9476. Colleagues, it's a $50,000 reward to get the bad guys that killed this young innocent kid. I spoke with his mother a couple of days ago. It's been an ongoing investigation. We're hoping that this $50,000 will boost up the awareness, and we will continue this discussion, and somewhere in August, we're going to have the mother and a few other people at the intersection where this took place. So I look for your unanimous support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Let's hustle a little bit on this, John. It's my, I should have let you know, I should have called you up before we began. Anyway, go on, Mr. Walsh.
You can do no wrong. John Walsh, the crime, we have a crime uptick in Hollywood, Eric, and in the whole city. Mr. Garcetti, he will say, "Oh, crime is, crime is down." Yeah, from when Rodney King was around a quarter of a century ago. Crime Mapping L.A. divides the County of Los Angeles into 272 neighborhood crime reporting areas, 272. And crime Hollywood, and also out in the West Side, we're in the top 20 or 30. The crime in Hollywood is, violent crime is lower than West Compton, lower the violent crime rate. What we're saying here is that the reason you don't talk about it is because it might hurt real estate values. We know exactly what's happening. HollywoodHighlands.org, we're almost as bad as Chicago.
State, Mr. Walsh, just take a seat, because I'm going to call another one of your items next. Yes, Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. President, I know that was a little bit off-topic. Going to Crime L.A. right now in the L.A. Times, going to Hollywood, it literally pops up, crime at typical levels, no alert detected. We're working very closely always with public safety, whether they be, we've seen violent crime fall 66% in Hollywood. It's incontrovertible. When they have those things there, we have an incredible police captain right now who's working and holds that community with additional police officers put there the last two years, extremely accountable. So I just wanted to say, that source right now that was cited, it says, itself says, "No crime," it says, "crime at typical levels, no increase." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Bill, you want to close?
Yes, please. Colleagues, I urge your support on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Everything today, Mr. Rosendahl's forthwith, everything. Okay, we're going to go now, Madam Clerk, to item 46. Mr. Walsh, we have a card. Item 46, John. And I'm told you have one minute. It doesn't seem like he spoke that much, but I trust you.
One minute to live. This concerned, item 46, this is the REAP, and HollywoodHighlands.org. This concludes my five minutes. Go to Crime Mapping L.A., see who is lying, John Walsh or someone else. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, John. Okay, members, we're going to vote on this. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Okay, I'm still charging the city attorney with finding an alternative phrase for me to say. He has been very unsuccessful up to this point, so you're going to have a little time to think about it, and I trust your creativity. Mr. Garcetti, are you ready for item, I think it was your item was 70?
Yep.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the many community members who contacted my office with concerns about keeping the Glassell Park pool operating year-round. I shared your concerns, and we're currently exploring funding options. The Department of Rec and Parks told our office that it would cost several hundred thousand dollars to keep the pool open year-round, but this is a very used pool. It is critical in the community. We're also exploring the possibility of extending the closure date into the fall in case year-round funding falls short. With this intention, we're requesting a transfer of $10,000 to assist in keeping the pool open, especially during the summer months. And we also have representatives from Department of Rec and Parks to help us walk through some of the numbers and figures so we can look at some of the longer-term solutions. So if Rec and Parks staff would just come forward for a second, thank you. Just a few quick questions, and I'm going to give you all the questions, and then you can answer them, and I'll sit down. How much does it cost to run the Glassell Park pool year-round, first of all? How much would it cost to keep the pool operating until the end of the summer? Do you know what the attendance is, daily and yearly attendance? And what were the factors that were considered in the seasonal closure of the pool? And with $10,000 transfer, how many more weeks can we expect to keep the pool open after August 12th? And if you want those, I can give them to you to remember. You got them? Okay. We're well-prepared. And thank you, and thank you again for everybody in the Northeast community. Anyone else who's come to love the pool in Glassell Park, we appreciate your interest, and we'll keep fighting to make sure that we can keep that open. Thank you.
Regina Adams, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks, and along with me, we also have Patricia Delgado, who is the lead over our aquatics division. If you don't mind, Councilmember, I'll answer your questions, but in a different order.
Yeah, sure.
First of all, the decision was not an easy decision for us. When we made a proposal to the mayor's office, when we were directed to put together our budget for this fiscal year that just began, about budget reductions, and one of the things we came up with was to remove three of our pools from year-round operation to seasonal operation, that included the Glassell Pool, Hubert Humphrey, as well as PEC. And the reason we did that, we looked at several factors. One was the attendance compared with our other pools, as well as we looked at other factors, such as the distance that pools might be from other, other pools within our system and so forth. One of the things that we, and so what was, happened was, in the budget that began July 1st, these three pools, the resources were cut, and which was approved by both the mayor and the council. And so with that, we also lost four full-time positions, as well as part-time staffing. As far as for the attendance, the pools in those two that had the lowest attendance were PEC and Hubert Humphrey. Glassell has approximately 100 people daily average that attend for that pool. And the cost to bring back the pools, and when we made the reductions, we did not put in all of the cost that it takes for us to operate the pools, because of course, we also have to do the maintenance, we also have to do the pool preparations and so forth. But the thing that has affected us the most is that, as you know, for our aquatics operations, it's a very safety-intensive operation. And over these past few fiscal years, we've lost resources from our people being able, from retiring and transferring and so forth. And so for us, it becomes very difficult for us each year to try to keep all of our pools operational that we are able to open. As you know, some pools are closed because they need to be replaced. But what we did was, we looked at these, as I said, several factors for our pools, and we came up with this for Glassell. As I stated, it's about 106 daily, about 22,000 average as far as for attendance. And we also looked at the closest pool that we could find near it, and that was Echo Park Deep. One of the things that also happened many years ago is that when, Echo Park Deep Pool is a year-round pool and Glassell is not, okay, which means that it was already, Echo was built to be a year-round pool. It has the underwater lighting and so forth to go along with that. What happened was, a few years ago, when we went into construction for Echo Park Deep, that is when Glassell Pool became a year-round operational pool to set, to offset for people who had been going to Echo Park Deep. We tried to maintain it at that level for several years, even after Echo Park Deep Pool was brought back online after it had received its construction. But we are now faced with the fact that we, our resources have dwindled and so forth. In your motion that you presented for the $10,000 for us to extend the pool season, one of the things that we've also changed this year for the summer is that LA Unified is going to be starting its school year earlier than it has been. So it's going to, kids are going to go back to school August 13th. So what we made the decision to do was to have our summer pool season end August 12th. For your proposal as far as to continue the pool operations, where we used to keep them open until Labor Day, this would, the $10,000, it actually would cost us about $16,000 to continue to have the part-time lifeguards and so forth to keep Glassell Park Pool open from August 13th to September 4th. So what we would ask is, in your motion, you had split the funds of the $10,000 between our salaries, full-time salaries, general account, as well as our salaries as needed, which is our part-time account. We would ask for the entire $10,000 to be placed in the salaries-as-needed account 1070.
All right, I'll go ahead and make that motion a change.
Fine. And before, you have people here from the public, but before we do that here, get close here. I want Channel 35, can you, you see the good-looking guy in the green shirt? Can you get him in this shot? He's here. Renzo is his name. He's from East L.A. College, and he needs to have proof to his professor that he was here. Ms. Mullen, Renzo is here. All right, Renzo, good luck to you. Donna Peirman. Ronnie Solomon. Destiny Vasquez. Mr. Herman, Dow House Dude.
Anyway, I think it's a no-brainer, you shouldn't close a pool. I'm glad to see that Ms. Garcetti's going to try to save that pool. You shouldn't close the pool in the summer, because that's when the kids really need the pool and families need the pool. So I actually, I think this is a good area that you're going past that, and I'm hoping that, that you also will find the money to keep Van Nuys City Hall open. Anyway, keep it open, I think that's a good thing. It's a no-brainer, and yay, 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 keep it open.
Thank you, Ms. Peirman. Do we have Ronnie?
Hi, my name is Ronnie Solomon. I'm a constituent of Councilmember Weesar and a swimmer at the Glassell Pool. You know, it's the only year-round outdoor city pool in our area. Alatory and Echo Deep are already full of people, so if you close our pool, even if it gets extended to Labor Day, but afterwards, they will become pretty uncomfortable to use for even the people that are already there, plus all the Glassell swimmers. The Northeast communities have come together to keep this pool year-round. Thank you very much, Councilmembers Garcetti and Councilmember Reyes, for coming up with $10,000 to keep it open a while longer. But what we really need is a long-term solution so that we could keep it year-round. The people have come together. We were stunned by how much support was galvanized, petition gathering, a website was started, Occupy Glassell Pool Facebook page. But I'm wondering if there's any outside-the-box creative ways that Park and Recs and the city could come up with, thinking of like Michelle Obama's anti-obesity efforts, for example? Maybe we could look for grants in that department, maybe offering nutrition and exercise classes at the pool as well. I know Kaiser Permanente has adopted the pool and subsidizes free swim classes. Maybe we could look at other private-public partnerships to keep the pool open year-round. If you need the public to help you boost attendance at the pool, I'm happy to go, and others, other volunteers to go to local senior centers and neighborhood councils and boost attendance in the winter, although I must say, it's always been busy, and I swim year-round there. Anyway, it's a gem of the Northeast community. We really would urge the city and the Parks and Rec and other interested parties to find more money to keep it open year-round. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Destiny, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Dow House Dude. Destiny Vasquez.
Hello, my name is Destiny Vasquez. I am a constituent of City Councilmember Weesar. I want to thank Garcetti and Reyes for coming up with money for Glassell Park Pool. I've been a swimmer at Glassell Park Pool since 2012, no, since 2002. Even though I didn't know how to swim and my mom had to carry me, I had it blast since then. I go to the pool every day. I go to the pool every day. I even went during school time, like, every Tuesday. On Tuesdays, we got out early, so I went. I taught myself how to swim in 2005. I was five years old. And why did I learn? Because the pool was open. If you close a pool, it's just like closing my freedom. Thank you for listening, and again, thank you Garcetti and Reyes.
Thank you. Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman.
Yes. So if there's a way to find funding, if there's a way to locate monies, then I'm sure the city can come up with better solutions for this long-term funding for existing pools, not just in the summer, but year-round. This is not about just children enjoying the summer at a pool. This has to do with adults and seniors. I know many times we don't take into consideration that adults and our seniors can use these pools, but they are people in our community, and they need more time to use these pools. So, great. The funding is there, and we found it. So how in the future will the City of Los Angeles show and hold, again, the word accountability as to where you find the resources of monies when there's such a crunch of money not being allocated for other areas that are impacted, that may want to open a pool that has been closed down due to lack of funds? So, yes, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for finding that fund, and as well as you, Mr. Reyes, because my goal here is to see that a long-term allocated fund come under the general fund so that these type of topics don't have to come up in business, and we could also discuss the business of what the constituents want in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dude.
What sense does it make to close a pool during the summer when the kids need someplace to go to play? Do we always make senseless decisions with the people's money? Is that what we do? Yeah, that's what we do. I really don't care who goes swimming or doesn't. I care that everybody has a home, you know, with a swimming pool. That way, we don't need your ridiculous public pools that need a lot of money to operate. Why don't we just give everybody a home with a swimming pool? Wouldn't that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you. So on this item, oh, Mr. Garcetti.
Just one other change. It just says, it does say Council District 13 as of Sunday. It's actually Council District 1, so we might want to correct that for the record as well. And look forward to working with Mr. Reyes. This came out of funds in CD 13. We're happy to continue doing that, just we share this community, and we'll talk to Mr. Weesar and Reyes to see what else we can do to make this long-term sustainable. And we'll make the change, asked for by Rec and Parks. Thank you.
Fine. So now, Madam Clerk, we're prepared to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. Let's go to item. We go to item number two now. We was called special by cards. We have two cards on that item. John Walsh, who's out of town, and Linda Romney, who is not here. She left earlier. With that said, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. Zine, you called, I believe, sixty-six special. Are you ready?
Yes, I am. And I'd ask for a no vote on this zone change pursuant to Section 12.32(c)(3) of the LAMC. This property zone is currently consistent with the general plan land use designation. The property is currently zoned RA1, which is consistent with almost all of the properties in the area. Property is toward -- oriented toward Hatteras Street and not Tampa Avenue. All properties to the west of here, interior in this neighborhood, are zoned RA, and changing this property to a Q condition. RS1, as recommended by the South Atlantic Planning Commission, would not be in keeping with the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice in that it would then make this lot out of conformance with the others in this neighborhood. There is also no necessity for this action, and there are no projected projects at the site. So as a result of these findings, I ask that the zoning change application be denied, and that is on item number sixty-six at 19307 Hatteras. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zine, just for the record, Mr. Zine is requesting a no vote. Mr. Zine is requesting a no vote on this item.
No vote. Thank you. Please vote no.
Okay. With that said, Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Hit the red button. The red button. Wait, can we get Mr. Alarcon?
In fact, Mr. Zine, let us hold this item.
All right.
We need to find Mr. -- we have two Misters to quickly locate. I'm sure they're in the back.
You want to vote no on this item?
Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Zine could make a recommendation to disapprove.
He did that.
But that would be an affirmative vote to support his recommendation to disapprove, consistent with his findings. He'll just need a second.
Then once you clear it, clear it.
So then we would actually vote yes.
Correct. He's making a motion to disapprove.
All right. So a motion to disapprove, and then that will be -- can we clear the --
Is there a second?
Mr. Garcetti, second. So on that issue, let us open the roll.
Requesting a vote. Mine still shows -- mine still shows no.
You need to vote yes on this motion.
I know, but the fact is, it's showing no.
And we're going to vote on this item. We did not officially vote on the item before.
Requesting a vote.
We are doing that right now. I never requested the outcome of the vote, so the vote was not taken. Based on the amendment submitted by Mr. Zine, Mr. Zine is now requesting that we vote aye. So, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thank you.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us to -- there are no outbursts from those in the gallery. No, we're not gonna do that, so I don't want you to begin disrupting this meeting. Mr. Caretz, are you ready?
Yes.
Then item sixty-nine belongs to Mr. Caretz.
I wonder if we could have staff come up for this item?
If that's what you want, can we have staff, please, come forward on Mr. Caretz's concerns?
First of all, colleagues, I understand that any loan portfolio will have losses, but there's some disturbing items in this report. First, there's the sticker shock of nine million dollars in losses. And the department was instructed to submit annual loan portfolio reports, but the last report was submitted in February of 2010. According to the report, another nine million dollars in loans are in foreclosure. There are also over eighteen million in pending third-party foreclosures. Residual loan servicing is seriously behind, and a three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-dollar loan was booked due to a staff error. And I think this warrants at least some further discussion to learn from these losses and achieve better performance and fewer losses in the future. So I have a few questions. The first is, have we taken a look at what kind of loans went sour, and have we made changes going forward to prevent writing bad loans?
We basically had two different types of loans that went -- that we had problems with. The losses are -- most of them are generated from the first foreclosure. We had single-family and multifamily losses. On the multifamily losses, I think we're doing a better job in underwriting our borrowers on multifamily. On single-family, unfortunately, I think our losses are a result of the housing bubble. We saw that housing prices rose, loans are much easier to get, underwriting of the first were probably not as strong as they should have been, lower, and as a result of the downturn in the economy and people losing their jobs, we saw higher rate of foreclosure on the first and single-family. I think the single-family losses are just a matter of market risk. On the multifamily, we have looking at that, and we are doing a better job, I think, in underwriting our borrowers.
So what are we doing on the larger number of loans currently in bankruptcy or facing third-party foreclosure? What are we doing to limit the losses?
Well, on the single-family transactions where they're in foreclosure by the first, typically, we're trying to eliminate the losses by trying to make sure when they go to foreclosure sale that the foreclosure price is much more than the first and hopefully covers a portion of our loans, so we gain proceeds there. On the multifamily, I think we have much more options. On the multifamily, if there is a default on the first, by the way, I -- we will look at whether we have equity there to protect. We can come in and bring the first current and then do our own foreclosure action. In some cases, we saw that there's one transaction that we've had that we saw that we were able to bring the first current, and then on the multifamily transaction, that they were able to solve the problems they had, and we were -- to stop the foreclosure by the first.
Can I add to that? Second. Manuel Bernal, multifamily housing director, LHD. What you don't see here, though, is also ongoing efforts to monitor and mitigate losses on several other multifamily projects that we have. David and his group have been very active in identifying loans that are in trouble, and we jump right in there to try to negotiate some sort of settlement or some sort of agreement before the city investment is lost, as well as the affordability is lost. So, again, I just want to make sure that, while it's not in this report, there is ongoing monitoring of all our portfolio.
And also, the CAO report notes that your annual report is considerably past due. What can we do to get that in and to have those arrive on time in the future?
I can chip in, and then Anne Marie can, too, I mean. You know, I think it's been a -- the request of the council was to come back on an annual basis. We saw that. We went ahead and prepared this report a few -- many months ago, and because of just a lot of other things going on, it just took a long time for it to get here. But we actually worked on this report back in September, and it eventually was submitted in December. But we've been trying to get -- become more timely in the submission of the report. So moving forward, I think we can expect that we'll be back. In fact, we do know that we have another report due almost, you know, last Friday or last Saturday. So we need to be back here almost immediately to report on that. So we're more conscious of the information that needs to be shared here, and we'll push that through.
Thank you. Mr. Caretz, you can push your button again. You're significantly over. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. I think this is the write-off season for people who owe the city money, because last week, there was an issue of millions of dollars, kind of like take an eraser and just wipe it away. What I find very frustrating is some of the properties that we have here, a childcare center, apartment, vacant land, condo, I don't know who's watching to make sure it's done properly. We criticize the banks and say that they're not adjusting the loans so people can afford to stay in those particular residents. What have we done to try and help those individuals that can't make the payment? How have we done adjustments to try and keep those occupied? Because once it goes into foreclosure, the property goes into, shall we say, a very negative condition, and it then detracts in the neighborhood. So how long has the housing department around?
How long have it been around?
How long's the housing department been around?
At least twenty years since.
Because you think in twenty years, you get your act together to make sure it's done properly. So what I find frustrating is 1.5 billion-dollar portfolio, and you're gonna write off nine million dollars, a hundred and sixteen loans. So in response to my question, what are you folks doing to try and do it properly? Because this is not acceptable. To me, or to the taxpayers?
Well, I think that, again, this report only shows a portion of our work. I am very conscious, and the department's very conscious, that we need to preserve as much homeownership in this town as possible. The properties that we do have on the single-family side, we try to save as much as we can, but we're in second, and with the decline in market values, there's not much we can do.
But what have we done to adjust those loans so they can stretch it out?
I think because we're in second, we're more than willing to work out. I think what happens is that the first you trust is the one that dominates, and the other ones are foreclosed. I will point out one thing, though, is that when we do have an opportunity to retain homeownership, we take it, and we run with it, and we try to bring it to you. In fact, I want David to point out one specific item before you that is not conventional, that we're bending over backwards to preserve homeownership, and because we think it's important. So can you mention that, Kenet?
Resale.
The sole source, yeah.
There's one transaction which the department inherited from CDD. It was a foreclosure of a single-family residence. We've had that tenant there for a long, long time, and we want to turn that tenant into a homeowner. And so we're looking to do a sole-source sale to the current tenants.
What have we done with the primary lenders? Have we worked with the primary lenders to say, they haven't made this, they owe us on the secondary? If we sat down and say, whatever institution it is, how do we keep these people there instead of making them homeless, and how do we keep these property occupied? How do we adjust? Because we've been criticizing the banks for not adjusting.
We've attempted to do that. First of all, when we're -- let's focus in on homeownership. Our homeownership loans now are deferred loans. There's no payments on them, so they only need to make payments to the first. We've had attempted to get to the bank, to talk to them, to find out why they went -- the borrower went into foreclosure. Unfortunately, the banks have third-party foreclosure companies do these for us, so it's difficult to get the decision-maker in the bank. And then we asked the third-party foreclosure companies, they tell us that the information of why the borrower went into foreclosure is confidential.
Okay. Well, we need to do something in our arena to try and save these, because every time it goes into foreclosure, it's another nuisance in the community, another magnet for negative activities, and we just need to do a better job of it. That's the problem, is we're not doing the best job we can, and just writing them off doesn't solve any problem. All it does is create more problems.
Well, one other thing that I want to point out is that when we have an option, when the bank is willing to work with us and accept a short pay instead of a full foreclosure, we take that option, even though the city would be losing money. We do it because it preserves the buyer's or the borrower's credit, and it's bruised, but not completely damaged, and we understand that's valuable to the homeowner, and so we do it. And we do that routinely when we can do it and when the bank is willing to play that game. So we are very conscious of that we need to preserve as much homeownership as possible in this city, and we do the best we can.
And then I'd like to just address on the multifamily side. With those being commercial loans, the banks are a bit more open on the communication, and we have worked with the banks to stop them from foreclosing. But what we've had to do, because, like, for example, on our 81st Street property that we just recently sold, the nonprofit folded. There was nobody in the driver's seat. So we had to step up, bring the first current, do our own foreclosure, and then sell the property to an organization that can do the rehab and put it back into use.
Let me just close by saying, Mr. Press, just indulge me for a moment, is that on the chair of the Audit Government Efficiency Committee, we're taking these issues to the committee to iron out better ways to handle this, so we don't have to put these write-offs and continuing saga for the people of L.A. So we'll see you folks again.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas.
Nevermind.
Okay. Mr. Caretz, hopefully to close.
A couple last questions, and I actually was going to suggest the same thing, that this issue go to audits for follow-up. One of the losses in your report is from a staff error of booking payment to principal instead of interest. What have you done to correct this kind of a problem? And do you have internal controls for loan servicing? Are you subject to annual audits, et cetera? How do we avoid this kind of thing in the future?
Yeah. I -- forgive me, I'm only a year and a couple of months old in the department, so this goes back a few months, months. But my understanding is that up until recently, we were working with a system that was built in the 1970s, and apparently, this particular item or glitch wasn't caught. But since, I will say with a But since, I will say within the last few years, we've changed and switched to a new software that does catch both principal and interest, and requires payment of principal first and then interest. So, our system has been upgraded to catch the glitch.
So these kinds of things shouldn't happen in the future because of the upgrade?
That's correct.
And I think that's certainly a general problem citywide, is that we have a lot of opportunities, I believe, to save money and create efficiencies through upgrades and technology, and we just don't do them because we're short on cash, but it's penny-wise and pound-foolish, and we clearly should be investing more aggressively in our IT arenas and creating efficiencies and saving money in the long run.
Okay, thank you. So on this item, let us prepare the vote. So Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, the last item on today's agenda deals with closed session. Mr. Krikorian, do you want to recommend that we immediately go into closed session? So with that said, if we could have the sergeants please call, sergeants please call-- Wait, I do have a card from Mr. Herman on 63. I don't have a card from you, Mr. Dude, but I will ask, I will ask Mr. Herman to come forward, followed by Mr. Dude. Sergeants, if you could get ready. If you would listen, I said I was going to call you. Mr. Herman, when I call your name, come up, because your time's going to start running. Come on, you have one minute.
On what item?
63.
If there's ever a point that I want to draw your attention to, members of Los Angeles, it's this. Why do we continue to have discrimination against people with disabilities? Why? At a time, an unprecedented time, we have deficiencies in the city that allow discrimination towards people with disability. So take ear, Los Angeles. American Disability Act disagrees with you when you cannot mediate and bring a balance of understanding to causes under item 63. So, again, vote David Salzberg for mayor.
Mr. Dude?
Yes, on the housing issue, we know that banks do not belong in basic housing. All these ridiculous things--
Speak to the issue.
Well, we were talking about housing and I--
No, we weren't talking about housing. This is a different issue. It's a closed session. Item deals with the lawsuit.
What happened?
Oh, yeah, they were talking about housing, right?
No, we're not on this one, Mr. Dude. Mr. Herman, he doesn't need your assistance. Mr. Dude, thank you very much. Okay, sergeants, if you would please call, sergeants, please clear the council chambers. At this point, we're going into closed session. Please call, clear the council chambers. Mr. Walsh and everyone else have a good 4th of July. Let us please clear. Help, Mr. Dude. Help, Mr. Dude.
Okay, we have just returned to open session. Mr. City Attorney. I believe you have a special finding before you.
Yes, Mr. President. Since this Sunday evening, Veda Fanyel was shot and killed in front of his home at the 5400 block of Apple Street. Immediate action is required for counsel to offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspect of this murder for the safety of the community. Counsel must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's have a vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now we'll vote on the actual item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
I need the other sergeants to come and get Sergeant Johnson. He's disrupting the meeting. With that said, Madam Clerk, as a reminder, all items that were acted on today will move forthwith. Is there any additional business before this counsel?
Counsel has motions for post and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay, members, I'll start with just a simple announcement that I hope everyone has a happy and safe, let me emphasize the word, safe holiday tomorrow. And I will be in town, so if those of you get lonely and want to talk to somebody, you can call me.
I understand.
Announcements, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge my fine folks from San Pedro, which, you're going to announce that? Okay, well, I want to announce mine then, because I'm going to go to yours and I'm going to come to mine. The Fourth of July fireworks extravaganza, Warner Center Park, 5800 Topanga Canyon, a free event for the community. Come out and enjoy the concert and fireworks show. Fifty thousand show up, Mitch, maybe sixty thousand, but we closed down the 101 freeway at Topanga because of the surging crowd, but it's a wonderful event and it's a free event, so you're all invited. The Fourth of July extravaganza with a free concert, Warner Center Park, 5800 Topanga Canyon, adjacent to the Marriott Hotel. Come out and have a good time, bring your family and friends, and enjoy the Fourth of July. And we will be back at work Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see, I have my veteran's hat on, and one of the big things we do on the Fourth of July is salute and honor our soldiers in combat in harm's way. Once again, I want to salute everyone all over the world that is defending our freedom and our rights. And in that context, we have a parade at Loyola Boulevard in Manchester, and this is at 11:00 a.m. Join the thousands of people lined up and down Loyola Boulevard to experience the joy of our nation's independence. This year's parade theme is a tribute to America's pastimes. And then you can go up to the Palisades, frankly, and you see the largest parade in the area that happens between Villa La Paz and Drummond Street, and this is from 2:00 to 3:00. The Palisadeian American and his Parade Association is proud to present the 64th Annual Pacific Palisades Fourth of July Parade. Come join the fun, the festivals, as the Pacific Palisades comes alive with the spirit of freedom and independence. And if you're still hanging up in the Palisades, you'll see an incredible fireworks and concert at the Palisades Charter High School, featuring promising local acts, performing popular and patriotic songs. Come away with a flag and wave it, and the concert will be capped off with breathtaking fashion of the annual Pacific Palisades firework display. And again, salute all of our folks across the world in harm's way. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Celebration on the Fourth of July will begin in the Exposition Park right outside of the Coliseum at 1:00 p.m. with activities for children and families. 3:00 p.m. with a concert sponsored by KGLH and Unity One. And then at 9:00 p.m., the fireworks, which would be, I think, the largest display in the basin on the entire city of Los Angeles. The California African American Museum and the Science Museum will be open all day, as will the Natural History Museum, so it is a destination for the entire family for the whole day.
Mr. Buscagino.
Mr. President, I want to first thank you, Mr. President, for coming to our Watts King Task Force meeting yesterday. Thank you for showing your support to the Watts community. Members in the city, I just want to, at the harbor area, we're having a host of events tomorrow. We're going to kick off our morning at the Villa's 26th Annual Flag Ceremony at 1153 West 18th Street, followed by the Korean Bell Celebration at 9:00 at Angels Gate Park. And then the Pacific Battleship Center will be hosting the commissioning ceremony of the USS Iowa as a memorial and an educational museum. Joining us will be the Governor of Iowa, as well as the Mayor tomorrow, 12 noon. And of course, the great fireworks show at the Cabrillo Beach will kick off at 9:00, so all are welcome, and wishing everyone a great and safe Fourth of July. I also want to point out and thank our L.A. Police Officers, as well as our Port Police Officers, who will be all on max deployment tomorrow. I want to thank them for their service tomorrow.
Mr. Alacón.
Yes, it's my pleasure. We also have several Fourth of July events, starting with a Fourth of July event that I've been involved with since 1993 when first elected. We started the Fourth of July celebration at Hanson Dam, and each year have entertained approximately thirty thousand people a year with a Fourth of July celebration that includes fireworks. So we want to invite everybody to Hanson Dam tomorrow. There's an all-day program of entertainment, local entertainment, as well as professional musicians that will entertain us, and so we are very excited about that one. We're going to be celebrating hometown heroes, and that should be a very good event. Now, I've also inherited now officially, as of Sunday, from Mr. Krikorian, the Sunland to Hunger, Shadow Hills area, and they will have two major events, starting with the Fourth of July Parade, Remembering the Past, Embracing the Future. That event will begin at 10:00 a.m. and last for approximately, well, my part will last an hour. I don't know how long the parade is going to last, but the parade begins at 10:00 a.m. and it will be on Foothill. Excuse me, let me, this, I'm reading my notes, and I can't figure out where it starts.
It starts at Al, which one?
Where? This one?
Al's?
Oh. It starts at Al Reed's parking lot. It's a restaurant in Tahunga, and it ends at the Sunland Park. And later, there will be a demonstration of fireworks at Verdugo Hills High School, and so we want to welcome everybody to both the parade, which begins at, as I said, 10:00, and to the fireworks display at Verdugo Hills High School. I'm looking forward to it.
Any other, Mr. Englander?
To invite everybody to the largest, the city's largest and the regional, and the largest regional fireworks show, and that is at Shepherd of the Hills, where we'll have usually around sixty to seventy thousand people.
You showing off, Englander?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's why I asked Mr. Zine how many people are going to be participating at Warner Center. And, anyway, it's, everybody's welcome. It's a lot of fun. It's a great show. We're going to have friends, food, family, and fun, so come on out to Shepherd of the Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Yeah, just one, one more item. If you don't want to fight the congestion up at Shepherd of the Hills, you can take the new orange line from Chatsworth all the way down to Warner Center, and free transportation, not free transportation, but minimal cost of transportation, a new orange line into Warner Center, and avoid the traffic congestion that will occur with the large crowds that turn out. And one thing that we haven't, we failed to mention, we must mention, is all fireworks are illegal in the city of Los Angeles, and we know that with the warm weather, our firefighters are going to be available, but fireworks are illegal in the city of Los Angeles. You can be cited, they can be confiscated, so you've got a number of events throughout the city of Los Angeles to attend, and we encourage people to do that and not destroy your neighborhood by starting a fire. We know what happened in Colorado with these fires. So from all of Los Angeles, have a lovely Fourth, but do not do illegal acts with fireworks tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. If all in the council chambers could please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and colleagues. I just want to say that a wonderful man named Ernie Wolf Jr. just passed away. He was a pillar of the West Los Angeles community. He passed away on Tuesday, June 26. Among many things, Ernie will be remembered as a father, a grandfather, an extraordinaire, a loving husband, businessman, and community leader. Born in Los Angeles on August 11, 1926, Ernie attended University High School and earned his BA from UCLA. While at UCLA, he served as the president of his senior class, as well as president of the Delta Sigma Phi fraternity. Aside from being deeply committed to his family, Ernie was especially involved with all things UCLA Bruins. This included being the travel agent for many Bruins sporting events. He was also one of the founders of the Pauley Pavilion and had season tickets to UCLA basketball and football for more than half a century. A true community leader, Ernie was a member of the Westwood Village Rotary Club for five decades, where he was elected president and honored as Rotarian of the Year. He was also a founder of the West Side YMCA at its present Surtell location, and for more than two decades, made weekly deliveries of Meals on Wheels in West Los Angeles, serving as president of their advisory board for two terms. Ernie was also passionate about the Westwood United Methodist Church and was deeply involved in his charitable outreach programs during his sixty-plus years of committed membership and service. He was most proud of his campaign to renovate and restore the church's organ. Ernie was preceded in death by his first wife, Claire, the mother of his two adult children, Ernie Wolf III, who happens to be a good friend of mine and inform me of his father's passing, and Andrea Phillips. He's survived by his wife, Joy, her daughter Jennifer. He's also survived by his grandchildren, Ernest Wolf IV, Russell Wolf, Alexander Phelps, and Will Phelps. In lieu of flowers, contributions in his memory may be made to the Meals on Wheels of West Los Angeles, the Westwood United Methodist Church, or Westwood Village Rotary Club. A memorial service will be held at Westwood United Methodist Church at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, July 7, 2012. May he rest in peace.
Okay, Mr. Englander.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Marjorie E. Regan, the mother of Recreation and Parks Assistant General Manager Kevin Regan, passed away at the age, the young age, of 81. Margie, everybody called her, was born and raised in Los Angeles and lived in the Grecelle Park Eagle Rock area. She graduated from John Marshall High School, UCLA, and Hollywood Press Hospital Nursing School. She started and launched the HIV/AIDS Clinic at the Pasadena City Health Department and worked caring for AIDS patients for 20 years. Margie was married for 49 years to 24-year LAPD veteran Michael Regan. They had two sons, Kevin, our Assistant General Manager here, and Dennis, who's a doctor who resides in Oregon. Margie was a helpful, loving, caring person who always provided care to all. She volunteered at the Los Angeles Police Historical Society Museum. She also loved animals and supported the World Wildlife Fund. May Margie rest in peace. Also wanted to share that not only was she instrumental in raising two wonderful boys, that her husband had three brothers as well. They were all LAPD officers. Her best friend also married an LAPD officer. She
Okay, we have just returned to open session. Mr. City Attorney. I believe you have a special finding before you.
Yes, Mr. President. Since this Sunday evening, Veda Fanyel was shot and killed in front of his home at the 5400 block of Apple Street. Immediate action is required for council to offer a reward for information leading to the arresting conviction of the suspect of this murder for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering this substantive motion.
Okay, let's have a vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now we'll vote on the actual item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
I need the other sergeants to come and get Sergeant Johnson. He's disrupting the meeting. Okay, with that said, Madam Clerk, as a reminder, all items that were acted on today will move forthwith. Is there any additional business before this council?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay, members, I'll start with just a simple announcement that I hope everyone has a happy and safe let me emphasize the word, "safe" holiday tomorrow. And I will be in town, so if those of you get lonely and want to talk to somebody, you can call me.
I understand.
Announcements, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge my fine folks from San Pedro, which you're going to announce that? Okay, well, I want to announce mine then, because I'm going to go to yours and I'm going to come to mine. The Fourth of July Fireworks Extravaganza Warner Center Park, 5800 Topanga Canyon, a free event for the community. Come out and enjoy the concert and fireworks show. Fifty thousand show up, Mitch, maybe sixty thousand. But we closed down the 101 freeway at Topanga because of the surging crowd, but it's a wonderful event and it's a free event, so you're all invited. The Fourth of July Extravaganza with a free concert. Warner Center Park, 1500 Topanga Canyon, adjacent to the Marriott Hotel. Come out and have a good time, bring your family and friends, and enjoy the Fourth of July, and we will be back at work Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you can see, I have my veteran's hat on, and one of the big things we do on the Fourth of July is salute and honor our soldiers in combat in harm's way. Once again, I want to salute everyone all over the world that is defending our freedom and our rights. And in that context, we have a parade at Loyola Boulevard in Manchester, and this is at 11:00 a.m. Join the thousands of people lined up and down Loyola Boulevard to experience the joy of our nation's independence. This year's parade theme is a tribute to America's pastimes. And then you can go up to the Palisades, frankly, and you see the largest parade in the area that happens between Villa La Paz and Drummond Street, and this is from 2:00 to 3:00. The Palisadeian American and its parade associations proudly present the 64th Annual Pacific Palisades Fourth of July Parade. Come join the fun, the festivals, as the Pacific Palisades comes alive with the spirit of freedom of independence. And if you're still hanging up in the Palisades, you'll see an incredible fireworks and concert at the Palisades Charter High School, featuring promising local acts performing popular and patriotic songs. Come away with a flag and wave it, and the concert will be capped off with breathtaking fashion of the annual Pacific Palisades firework display. And again, salute all of our folks across the world in harm's way. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Celebration on the Fourth of July will begin in the Exposition Park right outside of the Coliseum at 1:00 p.m. with activities for children and families. 3:00 p.m. with a concert sponsored by KGLH and Unity One. And then at 9:00 p.m., the fireworks, which would be, I think, the largest display in the basin on the entire city of Los Angeles. The California African American Museum and the Science Museum will be open all day, as will the Natural History Museum. So it is a destination for the entire family for the whole day.
Mr. Buzkayino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first thank you, Mr. President, for coming to our Watts King Task Force meeting yesterday. Thank you for showing your support to the Watts community. Members in the city, I just want to, at the Harbor area, we're having a host of events tomorrow. We're going to kick off our morning at the Villa's 26th Annual Flag Ceremony at 1153 West 18th Street, followed by the Korean Bell Celebration at 9:00 at Angels Gate Park. And then the Pacific Battleship Center will be hosting the commissioning ceremony of the USS Iowa as a memorial and an educational museum. Joining us will be the Governor of Iowa, as well as the Mayor tomorrow, 12:00 noon. And of course, the the great fireworks show at the Cabrillo Beach will kick off at 9:00, so all are welcome. And wishing everyone a great and safe Fourth of July. I also want to point out and thank our L.A. police officers, as well as our Port Police Officers, who will be all on max deployment tomorrow. I want to thank them for their service tomorrow.
Mr. Alakon.
Yes, it's my pleasure. We also have several Fourth of July events, starting with a Fourth of July event that I've been involved with since 1993 when first elected. We started the Fourth of July Celebration at Hanson Dam, and each year have entertained approximately 30,000 people a year with a Fourth of July Celebration that includes fireworks. So we want to invite everybody to Hanson Dam tomorrow. There's an all-day program of entertainment, local entertainment, as well as professional musicians that will entertain us. And so we are very excited about that one. We're going to be celebrating hometown heroes, and that should be a very good event. Now, I've also inherited now officially, as of Sunday, from Mr. Krikorian, the Sunland, Tahunga, Shadow Hills area. And they will have two major events, starting with the Fourth of July Parade, Remembering the Past, Embracing the Future. That event will begin at 10:00 a.m. and last for approximately well, my part will last an hour. I don't know how long the parade is going to last, but the parade begins at 10:00 a.m. and it will be on foothill. Excuse me. Let me, this I'm reading my notes, and I can't figure out where it starts. Where? This one?
Al's.
Oh. It starts at Al Reed's parking lot. It's a restaurant in Tahunga, and it ends at the Sunland Park. And later, there will be a demonstration of fireworks at Verdugo Hills High School. And so we want to welcome everybody to both the parade, which begins at, as I said, 10:00, and to the fireworks display at Verdugo Hills High School. I'm looking forward to it.
Any other, Mr. Englander?
To invite everybody to the largest, the city's largest and the regional, and the largest regional fireworks show. And that is at Shepherd of the Hills, where we'll have usually around 60,000 to 70,000 people.
You showing off, Englander?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's why I asked Mr. Zine how many people are going to be participating at Warner Center. And anyway, it's, everybody's welcome. It's a lot of fun. It's a great show. We're going to have friends, food, family, and fun. So come on out to Shepherd of the Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Yeah, just one, one more item. If you don't want to fight the congestion up at Shepherd of the Hills, you can take the new Orange Line from Chatsworth all the way down to Warner Center, and free transportation. And not free transportation, but minimal cost of transportation, a new Orange Line into Warner Center and avoid the traffic congestion that will occur with the large crowds going to turn out. And one thing that we haven't, we failed to mention, we must mention, is all fireworks are illegal in the city of Los Angeles. And we know that with the warm weather, our firefighters are going to be available. But fireworks are illegal in the city of Los Angeles. You can be cited, they can be confiscated. So you got a number of events throughout the city of Los Angeles to attend, and we encourage people to do that and not destroy your neighborhood by starting a fire. We know what happened in Colorado with these fires. So from all of Los Angeles, have a lovely Fourth, but do not do illegal acts with fireworks tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. If all in the council chambers could please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Rosendahl.
Very much, Mr. President, and colleagues. I just want to say that a wonderful man named Ernie Wolf Jr. just passed away. He was a pillar of the West Los Angeles community. He passed away on Tuesday, June 26. Among many things, Ernie will be remembered as a father, a grandfather, an extraordinaire, a loving husband, businessman, and community leader. Born in Los Angeles on August 11, 1926, Ernie attended University High School and earned his BA from UCLA. While at UCLA, he served as the president of his senior class, as well as president of the Delta Sigma Phi fraternity. Aside from being deeply committed to his family, Ernie was especially involved with all things UCLA Bruins. This included being the travel agent for many Bruins sporting events. He was also one of the founders of the Pauley Pavilion and had season tickets to UCLA basketball and football for more than half a century. A true community leader, Ernie was a member of the Westwood Village Rotary Club for five decades, where he was elected president and honored as Rotarian of the Year. He was also a founder of the West Side YMCA at its present Surtell location, and for more than two decades, made weekly deliveries of Meals on Wheels in West Los Angeles, serving as president of their advisory board for two terms. Ernie was also passionate about the Westwood United Methodist Church and was deeply involved in his charitable outreach programs during his 60-plus years of committed membership and service. He was most proud of his campaign to renovate and restore the church's organ. Ernie was preceded in death by his first wife, Claire, the mother of his two adult children, Ernie Wolf III, who happens to be a good friend of mine and informed me of his father's passing, and Andrea Phillips. He's survived by his wife, Joy, her daughter Jennifer. He's also survived by his grandchildren, Ernest Wolf IV, Russell Wolf, Alexander Phelps, and Will Phelps. In lieu of flowers, contributions in his memory may be made to the Meals on Wheels of West Los Angeles, the Westwood United Methodist Church, or Westwood Village Rotary Club. A memorial service will be held at Westwood United Methodist Church at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, July 7, 2012. May he rest in peace.
Okay, Mr. Englander.
Like to adjourn in memory of Marjorie E. Regan, the mother of Recreation and Parks Assistant General Manager Kevin Regan. Passed away at the age, the young age, of 81. Margie, everybody called her, was born and raised in Los Angeles and lived in the Glatzel Park Eagle Rock area. She graduated from John Marshall High School, UCLA, and Hollywood Press Hospital Nursing School. She started and launched the HIV AIDS Clinic at the Pasadena City Health Department and worked caring for AIDS patients for 20 years. Margie was married for 49 years to 24-year LAPD veteran Michael Regan. They had two sons, Kevin, our Assistant General Manager here, and Dennis, who's a doctor who resides in Oregon. Margie was a helpful, loving, caring person who always provided care to all. She volunteered at the Los Angeles Police Historical Society Museum. She also loved animals and supported the World Wildlife Fund. May Margie rest in peace. Also wanted to share that not only was she instrumental in raising two wonderful boys, that her husband had three brothers as well. They were all LAPD officers. Her best friend also married an LAPD officer. She instilled the importance in her family of what it means to be part of a city family, of what it means to be part of the city of Los Angeles, and raised her son, one son, eh, he turned out as a doctor. The other, Assistant General Manager of Wreckin Parks. So may she rest in peace. I'm going to ask for all members, please.
With all members, without a doubt. And Kevin, our heart goes out to you as well. I know how difficult that is. I'm just dealing with it myself, the first anniversary, the biggest loss of my life, so I know what you're going through. And I just want to quickly adjourn in the memory of a very active young lady, and I see that there are other people. Alicia Salazar, who was very active in the community. I don't have the particulars as of yet, but I want to go on the record adjourning in her memory. I would request that all members be on this. I mean, you know, you guys hear me harp on this all of the time. If there's somebody that you love, make sure you tell them. Just last Wednesday, she was on a bus trip with 40 other women going to a spa. She had a luncheon appointment the day after the Fourth of July. So members, they're people you care about. Let them know today. So that's all you can do. Mr. Zine, and then Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Well, Los Angeles Police Department lose another retired member, a member that I worked for at Valley Trap Division, one of the selection members that selected me when I applied to be a motorcycle supervisor, Lieutenant John Mitchell, officially known as Mom, serial number 7942. Lieutenant John Mitchell, retired from Los Angeles Police Department after 35 years of service to the people of Los Angeles. Consummate professional, contagious enthusiasm for the job and the welfare of his troops, a great cheerleader for the department, and a very caring supervisor. We called him Mom because he treated us like his children and always guiding us in the right direction. And he used to put in the time book. If you were late, he wouldn't put a red mark, he'd put a sad face. Because in law enforcement, if you're late, you get a little red mark. He'd put a little sad face in the time book. And he was just a very well-respected member of the Los Angeles Police Department who retired. And after his retirement, he still attended many of the functions for the members of the Los Angeles Police Department. But one of the founding members of the Valley Trap Division retired out of that division. And in later years, he was into bicycle riding, getting into good shape. And sadly, he was admitted to the hospital, and he suffered from cancer, ultimately passed away this past weekend. But well-respected, and I have emails from many of the former members of the LAPD who worked with him, and wonderful compliments of how much of a pleasure it was to work. Lieutenant John Mitchell, officially known as Mom, serial number 7942, and to watch. God bless John Mitchell.
All members, Mr. Zine, all members. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Kevin, my deepest sympathies to you, and you raised quite a boy, and it sounds like quite an incredible woman. And I just heard the big terrible news about Alicia Salazar as well. A longtime friend, great activist, worked a lot on housing issues with her, and we were more recently working together, and she was recruiting people for other endeavors I've been involved in, and she is just, it's a shock, I think, to all of us. So if I could second that. But I'd like to adjourn in memory today of Lee Dudley, a native Angelino, an Air Force veteran, and a great graduate of Occidental College and activist in job training in the city and county has passed around. Lee Dudley was born 1930 in Los Angeles. He attended Hoover High School in Glendale and got a bachelor's degree from Occidental. After that, he served in the Air Force for two years and married his wife of 55 years, Mary Lou Dudley, in 1957, and was a resident of San Marino since 1970. He was one of Los Angeles's original tech pioneers, joining IBM in 1956. For 43 years, he served in various capacities there, including becoming an executive. He was the Community Relations Director from 1985, and as an advocate for civil rights and equality, he worked tirelessly on establishing a diverse workforce at IBM until his retirement in 1999. Whereupon, he started a consulting firm, Lee Dudley Solutions, and was appointed as a member of the City of Los Angeles's PIC, or Private Industry Council. He resigned after more than 11 years of service on the PIC and was later hired as a consultant to transform the PIC into what we now know as the WIB, the Workforce Investment Board. He was also on the Board of Los Angeles County Info Line, now 211 L.A. County, was a member of its executive operations committees for 22 years. And he was a consummate business professional, trusted and beloved workforce development colleague. The WIB and its many public-private nonprofit sector partners will miss Dudley's presence, his know-how, his institutional memory, and of all facets of workforce development. But he'll also be more importantly remembered as a loving husband, a great father, successful businessman, and humanitarian with a passion for golf. Lee loved his family, friends, golf, and working to serve the community. Memorial service for Dudley was held Friday, June 29, at the Church of Our Savior in San Gabriel, and he survived by his incredible wife, Mary Lou Dudley, daughter Leslie, and sons David and Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Again, Kevin, all of our condolences. There's no more business before this council. We are adjourned.